Good evening. Welcome to this regular meeting of the San Antonio Valley Unified School District Board of Education for February 22, 2022. I'd ask you all to please rise and join us in the saying of pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, just as for all.
Thank you. I want to welcome everyone who's here in person. I also want to welcome all those who are watching us live on YouTube channel right now. Item 5, 6.0 is report of actions taken in closed session prior to this meeting. There were no actions taken, so nothing to report out at this time. Item 7.0 is acceptance of minutes, 7.1 minutes of February 8th. Board members, any comments, questions, changes, emissions? Otherwise, can I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Board Member Clark and seconded by Board Member Bratt. Call out vote. Student Board Member Batra.
Aye.
Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Clark.
Aye.
Board Member Bratt.
Aye.
Board Member Hurd.
Aye.
Board Member Mintz.
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. 8.0 Agenda Approval and Consent Action. 8.1 Acceptance of the Open Session Agenda. Can I have a motion, please?
Yes, move approval.
Second. The motion was made by Board Member Ordway and seconded by Board Member Clark. Call out vote. Student Board Member Batra.
Aye.
Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Clark.
Aye.
Board Member Bratt.
Aye.
Board Member Hurd.
Aye.
Board Member Mintz.
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Before moving on to 8.2, something I normally do, and I haven't had an opportunity, I'd just like to introduce our board members this evening. Myself, I'm Ken Mintz, President of the Board currently. Vice President Rachel Hurd.
Hello. Good evening.
Clerk Laura Brandt.
Good evening.
Trustee Shelley Clark.
Good evening, everybody.
Trustee Suzanne Ordway.
Hi, everyone.
And our student board member, Ronit Batra.
Hi.
Thank you all. Item 8.2 is approval or consent agenda. Our consent agenda is made up of items that are considered routine in nature and normally do not require a lot of discussion or singular votes. We vote on a number of items in a single vote unless someone wants to pull it off for a specific consideration. Do we have any that the public has asked to poll? Any from staff about board members? Okay, in that case, on the consent agenda, can I have a motion?
I'm so moved.
Second. The motion was made by Board Member Bratt and seconded by Board Member Hurd. Call out vote. Student Board Member Batra.
Aye.
Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Clark.
Aye.
Board Member Bratt.
Aye.
Board Member Hurd.
Aye.
Board Member Mintz.
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. On 9.0 Reports to the Board, we have a number of report items this evening. 9.1 Strategic Directions on Special Education. Christine.
Sure. Thank you, President Mintz. I'm going to invite up our Executive Sopa Director to present on our strategic directions surrounding special education.
Good evening, trustees, community members, and colleagues. I am Lynda Raley Tom, the Sopa Executive Director, and I am pleased to be here to provide an overview of special education in San Antonio Valley Unified School District and discuss how we align with our district's strategic directions, specifically in the areas of equity, social emotional deep, social emotional well-being, deep learning, and innovation. Our strategic directions are built on a foundation of academic excellence, and we know by all of our traditional measures that we already have a strong foundation of academic excellence. We want to build on that foundation by broadening our definition of success and looking at the whole child. We are dedicated to continuing that excellence where all students thrive and succeed by prioritizing inclusive learning environments and truly valuing what all students are bringing into the classroom. For students in special education, this means paying close attention to how we not only support their individual needs, but also assist them in achieving their goals. Success means our students are able to not only achieve academically by meeting those goals, but also experience social emotional well-being, develop their curiosity, confidence, and independence as learners, appreciate the importance of teams and collaboration, demonstrate empathy and compassion, determine their purpose, and become their own self-advocate, and most importantly, love learning and connect to their school experience. Our six strategic directions guide our work, and special education and the needs of students with disabilities run through all of them. As I said previously, tonight we will focus on equity, social emotional well-being, and deep learning and innovation. Though within our special education work, we are also addressing how we use our resources effectively to maximize student outcomes, listen to our stakeholders, and adapt as necessary in order to keep our students at the forefront of our efforts. Special education in the San Antonio Valley Unified School District. Within that, our students are first and foremost general education students. Each special education student in San Antonio Valley has an individualized education program or IEP. That IEP outlines the supports and services needed to assist the individual student in meeting their unique needs. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or IDEA, guides the work we do for all our students in special education. The foundational tenets of IDEA charge us to provide each student in special education with a free, appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment. What that means is that each IEP is individually crafted to provide educational benefit to that special education student, and to the maximum extent appropriate, students with disabilities are educated in classrooms with peers who do not receive special education services, and that students with disabilities have access to the general education curriculum. The least restrictive environment allows our students to access the work that is occurring around equity, deep learning, and social emotional well-being. It sets the tone for everything we do. It is important to remember that special education is a service and not a place. And in order to provide those foundational tenets of IDEA, we have two actions and goals that we are focusing on. First is to create and sustain programs where students have the opportunity to spend as much time as possible with their general education peers. Second is to develop IEPs that are designed to meet the students' unique needs and provide the necessary supports and services for them to access and attain their goals. The next slides provide background information and baseline data about special education within our district. San Antonio Valley Unified School District is a single district Sopa or special education local plan area, and as such, provides a full continuum of special education programs and services to eligible students from birth through age 22. We operate our own infant and preschool programs to meet the needs of our youngest learners, and an adult transition program to support those students needing post-secondary targeted intervention. All District TK-12 schools offer special education services. Each school has a resource specialist, speech and language services, and school psychologist services. Additional related services are available depending on the needs of the students, and some sites house full-time special education classrooms. I must also note that within our district, we have an amazing group of special educators who support students across the LRE continuum. The circle graphic on the left-hand side of this slide highlights that our special education students are first and foremost general education students. They are not separate because they require special education, they are part of the whole. Special education services are provided along the least environment continuum, from part-time support in either a push-in or pull-out model, to full-time support in a separate classroom, to specialized classrooms at a separate school, such as a non-public school. This slide represents special education students by primary disability, as captured by our annual pupil count taken in October. Students can be found eligible for special education services under one of 13 disability areas. In addition to determining the eligibility category, an IEP assessment team determines if that disability presents a significant educational impact that requires specially-designed instruction. It is important to note that this census data was taken on October 6, 2021, and is a snapshot in time that fluctuates over the course of the year as students are identified for special education or move into the district with existing IEPs. Our special education population represents approximately 11% of our total district population, which is below the statewide average of 12%, and the nationwide average of 14%. Our top four eligibility categories continue to be specific learning disability, speech or language impairment, autism, and other health impaired. Again, it is important to note that this is a snapshot in time, and it does fluctuate over the course of a year. Currently, we have about 3,300 eligible students for special education. That leads to our next slide, which shows the end-of-year cumulative special education enrollment over the last four years. We continue to trend upward in special education despite overall declining enrollment, and several factors play into that. One is the growth in families moving into the area for our special education programs. One is our MTSS structure that is still growing and developing to include targeted Tier One intervention, as well as sports across that continuum. And lastly, we're seeing an increase in assessment referrals, especially at the preschool and early childhood realm. That really speaks to the considerable needs of our students as we exit the pandemic and look towards supporting those students who haven't had the opportunity to really participate in early learning opportunities, or gain needed social interaction or appropriate developmental opportunities. This slide shows the percentage of students with an IEP who are in general education classrooms and the percentage of special education by program. 76% of our special education students spend 50% or more of their day, and 24% of our students spend 50% or less of their day in special education. Yes, the majority of our students do spend the majority of their day in a general education environment, however, we still have room for growth in terms of how we look at providing supports and services to students. Within special education programming, the majority of our students receive their primary specialized academic instruction within a resource specialist program at 53%. Our special day class enrollment represents about 26% of our population. We have 20% of our students who receive speech-only services, and we do have a percentage of our population who does require non-public school services at a site other than one operated by the San Antonio Valley Unified School District, and that is at 1%. The percentage of time a student requires special education is individually determined by each student's IEP team, based on that student's unique needs. While we assume general education for every student, we do need to realize that for some students, that might not always be appropriate, which is why we do have those numbers reflected in our special day class environments and our non-public school numbers. Some students, based on their individual needs, may require a setting outside of general education that is most appropriate. For example, students who are deaf may benefit from participating in an environment with peers who use and communicate a common language, such as participation at the California School for the Deaf. The next two slides reflect 2019 data from our California dashboard. This slide represents our CAS data. Students with disabilities participate in the CAS by either taking the Smarter Balance Assessment or participating in the California Alternate Assessment. The slide represents the performance of those students compared to the total population, both in English Language Arts and Math. We know our students with disabilities perform below expectation on statewide assessment measures for a variety of reasons. However, as we embark on our deep work, we need to examine how we support not only student participation in statewide assessment, but student engagement and achievement. Students with disabilities are below the district average in graduation rates, although this data does not take into consideration those students who stay with us beyond the completion of high school as part of our adult transition program. And our students with disabilities do have higher suspension rates compared to the total population. One of the key ways we are currently working in concert with general education is in our work to address significant disproportionality. In both the 2019-2020 school year and this past school year, 2020 to 2021, we were found to be significantly disproportionate in the over-identification of African-American students under the disability category of other health impaired. In order to address that significant disproportionality, we developed a comprehensive, coordinated, early intervening services plan to look at how we support pre-referral activities so that students are provided with appropriate supports and services prior to their referral to special education. This is an all-ED plan and a partnership between general and special education. The plan focuses on addressing biases through increased staff development on equity, aligning with our equity work, developing a systematic, consistent, multi-tiered system of support that addresses academic and behavioral concerns, that fully aligns with our MTSS work, and implementing a district-wide student study team system in order to improve student engagement and achievement and our own tracking. Additionally, we have developed and will continue to implement a three-week summer scholastic bridge program for students in the target population based on our C-Says Plan, as well as working collaboratively on the multi-tiered systems of support, implementing a model called Beyond SST for the student study team process, and continuing to create robust behavioral and social emotional interventions. The next slides dive deeper into how special education aligns with our strategic directions of equity, social emotional well-being, deep learning, and innovation. With regard to equity, we are focusing on all of the tenants of this strategic direction, working to create those learning environments that are safe and equitable and provide a sense of belonging for all students and staff. We are truly working to intentionally design and deliver inclusive environments for students at every opportunity, to cultivate teaching and learning experiences that are responsive and supportive of students' unique needs, to develop IEPs that are strengths-focused, starting with what the student can do and not what they cannot do. Part of what we tend to do in special education is that things at a deficit model. Our desire is to flip that and look at things as a strengths-based model. And lastly, to provide opportunities for special education students to participate in every aspect of campus life. When special education students are provided with inclusive learning environments, they demonstrate higher rates of academic performance, more satisfying and diverse friendships, increased engagement, improved communication, positive behaviors, and more successful post-secondary outcomes. Within social and emotional well-being, we would want our individualized education programs to support the whole child, taking into consideration all the needs of the student, not just those academically, to create and nurture instructional environments that prioritize students' social behavior and social emotional needs, to develop opportunities for students to practice social skills across their school day, to offer a continuum of mental health support for students, addressing student IEP needs that include school psychology services, counseling and rich programs, and possibly residential treatment centers for students who need to be served for a time being outside district programming. We want to cultivate collaboration and coordination between school psychologists, social workers, school counselors, and support counselors. With regard to deep learning, we recognize that students learn differently, and we need to be responsive to these differences. It's important that we incorporate student voice into what and how students are learning, focusing on what students are bringing into the classroom and starting from that place. It's important that our assessments become more authentic and that focus on what they should know. The work that is happening right now regarding essential standards can become the backbone of IEP goal development. Our IEP goals need to be developed and addressed to grade-level standards, and the work around essential standards is really key in honing that and creating consistent language where we're able to build robust IEPs. Universal design for learning is a foundation for all that we do. We consider the needs of the student before we create a program, before we develop those goals, and that is the fundamental tenet of universal design. And lastly, high expectations. When we consider the individual needs of special education students, we must do so from that strengths-based perspective, holding high expectations that students can make progress and meet their potential. Within those three pillars, we have key actions. The first, again, is to really go back and create those inclusive learning environments for students through a universal design lens that promote access to general education curriculum and a sense of belonging for all students. To do that, we'll do so by fully considering all options when developing a student's program, by defining a change of placement process that is thoughtful and based on multiple measures, so that students are not moved to a more restrictive setting without careful consideration. We want to develop individualized education programs that are responsive to student needs and provide educational benefit. And by educational benefit, we mean that the goals are clearly aligned with those areas of assessed need, and that the program that we develop is derived specifically from those goals and how we are going to support the student in receiving those and meeting those goals. If we craft IEPs to provide educational benefit and assume that students can make progress and meet their potential, we are again looking through that strengths-based lens. We want to work towards providing students increased access to A through G courses with the necessary supports and accommodations in place as outlined in their IEP. And lastly, it's important that we look at creating responsive and clear procedures and practices that support our special education staff in facilitating the IEP process. We want to really look at the PD and training that we're offering so that our special education staff is supported through targeted training and professional development, and that we develop a streamlined procedures guide that concisely outlines IEP process requirements. We have several ways in which we currently implement and measure our progress. We look at IEP implementation on an ongoing basis, whether that's progress on goals or whether or not we are providing the adequate number of minutes of instruction. We need to really double down on that and work on developing goals that we do measure with fidelity, because that determines whether or not we are appropriately implementing those IEPs. We're going to continue to monitor and measure how much time students spend in general education as part of every IEP discussion. We need to talk about all the possible options, and then we need to talk about why we would be removing a student from this general education setting, and why that is necessary in order to meet their needs. We need to really work on how we're doing that and making sure that at every meeting, we're carefully considering that. We want to work on increasing and measuring the participation of our students within statewide assessment, but also working on how we provide instruction so that the performance increases as well. And lastly, we want to work on reducing our risk ratio. This means that we're monitoring those areas as it relates to the over-identification of students with disabilities. So in certain areas, are we over-identifying in certain disabilities? We need to be monitoring that. I'll end by saying that inclusion is the intentional planning for the success of all students. If we start with an inclusion-based lens, all of our students can succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynda. Board members, any questions or comments? Go ahead, Laura.
With the increase in IEPs, are you finding that that school sites in the district overall have the bandwidth to be able to keep up with the process of creating IEPs and then going through the annual?
Thank you, trustee Bratt. To be perfectly honest, we have added additional assessment support this year in order to support the school sites in doing that. We have definitely seen an uptick as we've returned to in-person instruction, primarily because much of what we did was on hold during the course of the pandemic, because really, truly, when we are assessing a student, it is best to have them in front of you to be able to do all of that, because part of it is observation and how they're responding to those questions. And so we have been providing additional support in order to make sure that we're meeting timelines, but also supporting site staff.
Oh, okay. I have one. Also, what are we? This was years ago, but I remember when I was a classified employee. I was a parent when I went elementary. I was actually, because I speak Cantonese, I was asked to kind of help out in translation, you know. So what are some of those translation services for our family who's, you know, language is not, first language is not English?
We actually have several non-public agency partners who provide translation services. So we have a partner who is able to provide written translations for IEP documents, as well as assessment reports for families. And then we have another partner who does real-time translation and is able to come and attend IEP team meetings and help with navigating that for the families.
Okay, great. Thank you. Now, I think that's important, especially since I think just IEP process in English is complicated.
Very confusing.
Yeah, thank you.
In fact, Lynda, a question I have kind of relates to that one, and I was wondering about parental participation in the process. I know that parents participate in the IEP, but I'm just wondering in terms of particularly when we talk about collaboration and the needs, you know, special needs of these students, what are we doing in terms of, in that regard, in terms of bringing the parents into the fold as well?
So a couple of things that we started several years ago, and we are continuing, is providing, to the greatest extent possible, assessment reports ahead of time, as well as draft goals ahead of time, so parents can fully understand those, as well as offering to discuss that with them so that they're prepared. Our teams do reach out to families with regard to agenda setting as well, and our parents are invited to ask questions. Many of our school psychologists will meet with families prior to developing an assessment plan to talk through what that process is going to look like and what to expect and to answer questions as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Great. Lynda, thank you again very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your part. If someone had turned in a speaker card on this, you can go forward to ask a question? Did you have a question? Well, you can turn in a card after if you wanted to come up and make a statement. No? Can you? I'm sorry. If you have a question, can you come up to the podium to ask it, please? We just want to make sure he gets, no, no. It needs to get picked up on the microphone. If you can just introduce yourself, and you can fill out the speaker card after.
Yeah. Thanks for the presentation. My name's Ben Horn. I was just curious, have you guys been able to attribute the increase in children with disabilities to anything in particular?
Not yet. We're still collecting data in terms of the increase in children within our own district. What we're looking at is, we know our referrals in the early learning category have increased in terms of preschool. Again, a piece of that and what we're gathering based on parent interview is that many of our preschoolers did not participate in early learning activities around that. In terms of an overall increase in disabilities, I will say statewide, we're seeing an overall increase in students with disabilities. In terms of our own student population, we really look at that annual cumulative enrollment to kind of see where we are.
Thank you. Moving on to item 9.2, we have an annual update on LCAP and before and after-school interventions. Christine.
Sure. Thank you, President Mintz. I'm going to invite up our executive director of secondary, John Campopiano, and one of our coordinators, Sarah Landry, to present.
Good evening, trustees and audience members. Thanks for letting us join you tonight. My name is John Campopiano. I'm the executive director of secondary education. As many in the room, you and online know, we have LCAP meetings throughout the year to develop our LCAP plan, Local Control Accountability Plan. Every school district does it, updates it every year for a three-year cycle. This June, we will present a draft of this plan to our public and allow two weeks for public comments, questions, concerns during that process before we bring a final document to USP's. Tonight and throughout the year, we've been giving updates. And we, as a district, believe that we want to continue to update you on how the LCAP has evolved and changed throughout the year. As we know, we guide and inform all of our decisions through the strategic directions. Tonight, we're going to give you one example of stewardship of resources where we wisely use our resources to maximize success for our students. Tonight's focus is going to be a portion of our S R three funds, which is emergency relief funds we received from the state and federal government. And we targeted it towards learning loss due to COVID, students that needed increased support. So we're very excited tonight to share that for you. This is grounded in Assembly Bill 130, which requires us to update you. We do that throughout the year. In November, we discussed the educator effectiveness grant and how we would use that. Tonight, we're very excited because we're going to share how it's directly impacting our students. The impact to our budget overview, when we adopted, when you adopted the budget last June, the second board meeting with our LCAP, we've had changes since then where the American Rescue Acts have come in and give this, given districts additional funds. Tonight, we want to highlight how we address students that are in need of additional time and support. We're very proud of this work. And this work wouldn't happen without our MTSS liaisons, our director of curriculum, Debbie Pettish, and our coordinator, Sarah Costa-Landry, who has put together a really robust program that we're excited to share with you tonight. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Costa-Landry to discuss our before and after school intervention program.
Thank you, John. Good evening, trustees. I'm excited to talk to you about the before and after school intervention program and how it fits into our multi-tiered system of support or MTSS. All right. So first, it's important to ground our work in our strategic directions. And here you'll see our three instructional directions. On the right-hand side, what you see is the pyramid of tiered support in a multi-tiered system of support. The intention of this pyramid in this MTSS framework serves students' academic, social, emotional, and behavioral needs. You can see where the before and after school intervention program, what we're calling Basi for short, quite a lot of words in that name, fits into tier two and tier three. This work relates closely to social, emotional well-being. In fact, we have many sessions being offered for students to support those social, emotional needs. It, in addition, it attends to our deep learning and innovation direction because it's providing students the academic skills they need to be empowered and to be successful in their future endeavors. And ultimately, overall, in a system of MTSS, we are attending to equity because we are meeting every student where they are at, helping them feel heard, supported, and connected to their school. And that is the work of equity are those individual student needs. All right. So in any system of MTSS, it starts with data. So we're going to take a quick journey here through our data. Since spring of 2020, when our CASP, which stands for California Assessment of Student Performance, was paused. And what's exciting about that is that it initiated the adoption of a screening system because we anticipated not having academic progress data in the remote learning environment. And so we adopted a screener to be implemented three times a year. And so first, I'm going to share with you the data that would normally be shared out to the board, which would be our CASP data based on how students performed in the spring of 2021. But instead of CASP data, you can see on the timeline here, we have our screener or FastBridge data. All right. And that data also informs our before and after school intervention program. So here is our CASP data from spring of 2021. We see overall students are meeting our benchmarks, they are on track in reading and math, but we still have work to do because we see bands of students, seventeen percent of students struggling in reading and thirteen percent of students struggling in math. In addition, we have a state mandated test, the LPAC, the English Language Proficiency Assessment for California. What's exciting about this data is that we see in that green row our level four well-developed proficiency level for students who are being reclassified as fluent English proficient. So we can see that in 2018, 19, we were at thirty-six percent of students reclassified as fluent English proficient, and that has increased by eight and a half percent approximately in this past school year, which is great progress. But we also see students who are struggling as English learners at levels level one and three, hence the need for a program like Basi. So I've been talking about data in the framework of data. But we want to look at this, these pieces of data or these assessments as having two very different purposes. So our state testing data, our CASP and our LPAC is summative. It's done one time a year and measures student progress overall. That's valuable data. But in addition to that, in an MTSS framework, we really value a screener, which is formative. It helps us identify students early and often who need extra academic support or social, emotional support. So those are two key differences there. We just wanted to make sure we distinguish that. That screening data is very valuable. You'll see again here the tiered MTSS framework, but what's been added to this image is the universal screening bracket at the bottom. That is the foundation of establishing coherence across our MTSS system. We have universal screenings that are academic in nature and also social, emotional in nature. On the right-hand side, you'll see the labeled tiers. And this distribution of students by percentage is what works in a system operating with integrity and coherence across all of our schools. We want to see eighty percent of our students' needs being served in tier one universal instruction, which you heard from early, earlier actually, in the special education presentation, that universal design for learning rooted in deep learning principles is where we want our students' needs met. And then we're going to serve let twenty, we want to aim for less than twenty percent of our students being served with more targeted, targeted and intensive interventions in tier two and tier three. So we see how Basi fits in there in tier two and tier three, but Basi is before and after school. In addition to Basi, we have targeted and intensive interventions happening within the school day to support our students. That support looks like differentiated instruction, small group instruction, extra support provided by paraprofessionals, instructional aides, or interventionists, counselors who are meeting to support targeted intervention for students with special social and emotional needs. We also have banded student support time at every school meant to address tier two and tier three intervention. All right. So what is the screening data that informs our Basi program? This is our winter screening data from FastBridge. We can see if you think about those percentages and that eighty percent that we want to be serving in tier one, we can see we are surpassing that in math. Eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-seven and eighty-six percent of our students across from grades one through high school are on track in math. We still have students at risk that we want to serve. In reading, we see the scores are a little lower, but we're still meeting benchmarks. So it's still really positive data. But we know that especially some of those early literacy skills may have been affected by the reality of learning across the screen during remote instruction for our early readers and also probably affected those early numeracy skills as well. So we definitely have learning loss that the S R three funds are meant to address. And so this is how we're using them. We have our program details here. We can see the distribution of sessions. We have a hundred and seventy-six sessions happening, serving over seven hundred students with the majority of the sessions taking place in elementary reading with thirty-five percent, also elementary math. And then we also are serving elementary social, emotional well-being and also secondary ELA math and SOUP as well. All right. So what's exciting about this program is we have some fairly strong parameters around its implementation. Like I just pointed out with the previous graph, we're focusing on three key areas, reading, math, and social, emotional well-being. And also the intervention is targeted to a student's specific need. For example, I was in a fourth grade intervention session last week before school and that teacher had used a diagnostic assessment to identify each student's individual math need, what was the exact skill they needed to be working on at that time so that she could take them to the next level. They were in a small group. Teachers and interventionists are using high-quality pre-approved curriculum. And we're providing them training if they need that training. They're also being supported in progress monitoring so that they are working closely with their MTSS liaison at their school to track where their students start, how they're progressing through the intervention session and where that, when the student is ready to be exited, where they're at. And then ultimately, what's really important here, especially if you're a student, is incentives. Because we all know that sometimes if I'm a struggling learner, I don't love to show up for more school. So we want to be able to encourage that by providing, teachers are doing things like erasers or stickers or treats, whatever we can do to incentivize the program to get our students engaged and involved. All right. So here is the fun part. You see some students really in action. On the top left-hand side, you'll see the details for our academic sessions, which is for one to four students three times a week for up to twelve weeks, but students can be exited early proficient and have met that skill and the teacher feels that they are ready. You can see pictures of reading intervention happening. You can see a picture of a math intervention with algebra tiles. Those are those little red tiles at the top of the desk there on that math whiteboard led by Mona Keeler, one of our amazing math intervention gurus and then MTSS liaisons who is supporting our math intervention instruction. On the right-hand side, we see details about our social, emotional well-being sessions. One to ten students, the groups can be a little larger. Also, one to three times a week, they can happen a little less often for up to twelve weeks and students are also exited when proficient. You can see, we have a counselor at Country Club Elementary. That is his session room where he works with students there on their social, emotional skills in their before-after-school sessions, pretty cozy. And we also have, what's really cool is a friends art lab. A teacher has taken on a session to help students develop social skills and friendship-making skills. And they're working on really understanding people through the analogy of a, of a iceberg and how you don't fully see a person in their totality. We're kind of like icebergs and the majority of who we are is underwater. And so there's just some really cool things happening out there with these sessions to support our kids' learning. And so ultimately, I just want to say thank you. We have some more pictures here of kiddos in action. None of this work would be possible without our MTSS liaisons and their principals who worked really hard to get these sessions up and running at every one of their sites and also our interventionists, counselors, and teachers who are taking it upon themselves to lead these sessions and make a difference for our students. Thank you.
Sarah, thank you and John very much for the presentation. I have one question just to kick it off. How are we going to be impacted particularly before school with changes based upon state law this next year? Like what time do we start now before school? How late does after-school type interventions go?
So we try to schedule the sessions as close to the start and end times of the school day so it's not an extra burden for families or students arriving early or staying late. So it's going to be definitely school-dependent and they're thirty minutes long. So it's going to start either thirty minutes before school starts or thirty minutes after.
Okay, thank you. Board members, any other questions?
You talked about the FastBridge data that you look at to kind of assess where kids are and what their needs are. And it seems like it would be a little bit easier to be able to assess that with math and reading. But how can you talk a little bit about what kind of assessment there is for the social, emotional well-being part? How we determine which kids need that and are there other things that we use in order to assess our students?
Right, yes. So this year, we implemented a social and emotional well-being screener. So every student is assessed using the screener. It's particularly different depending on the student's age. We actually, would we care to hear any more details about the social, emotional well-being screener? I can't recall the name of it right now, but that's being implemented in partnership with the Cal Berkeley. And in addition to that, we have other screeners that are implemented through social, emotional well-being programs that we've adopted. And also we have screeners that counselors are using along with the MTSS liaison at their site to assess student needs and get referrals from teachers about who might need extra social, emotional support. I'm sorry if I did not do your question justice.
No, that's okay. So are there students that are in more than one, the student needs intervention in math and reading and social, emotional or any combination? How do you prioritize that?
There can be students in more than one session, although it can be difficult because of the intensity of the academic sessions. It's not typical that a student would be able to arrive and stay late for those three times in each of those areas. But we have some creative teachers who are working to sort of the student with, let's say, an early reading intervention and then when they meet a certain benchmark to transition them into a math intervention, if that's needed. But the data speaks to us as the biggest voice, right? We're going to, where is the student's greatest need based on the social, emotional well-being screener, based on that literacy screener and their math screener? And we'll start with that, letting, choosing based on that. And then from there, try to see if we can add in more additional supports.
Um, so thank you for your, for your presentation. I appreciate it. Um, so with the much smaller groups, the one to four and under ten, are the teachers being able to take advantage of opportunities where students, especially those younger students in the reading program, don't have to wear their masks? Are they going outside or are they, are they taking those opportunities?
I am not aware of whether students are doing by going outside. I think we're just trying to adhere to whatever county guidelines are guiding our, our schools at this time.
But we are, when opportunity, because I know our directive is that when opportunities arise for students to be outside to do work so that they don't have to wear their masks because student, the guidance is that students don't have to wear their masks when outside. That's, that's correct, right?
So I would imagine if there was a session taking place outside, that students would be able to take off their masks without, without an issue.
So, and so I guess my, my ask is to, to, to find out or to make sure that, that teachers are able to take advantage of that whenever possible.
Okay.
Thank you for this presentation. This has been a long time coming. I was so excited last spring when we had the addition of these MTSS liaisons, you know, for these dedicated one-time funds, which will be spread over two years. And to see what you have done in eight months or nine months to bring this to fruition and to see it happening, to see a report about the different interventions that are being chosen, just thank you.
Thank you. I have to admit, it's a coordinated effort of the entire curriculum and instruction team. And it, this, the beauty about MTSS is it touches all of us, right? It's got our math, our social, emotional well-being, our early literacy, our later literacy skills. We need all of us to make this work. Thank you, Rachel.
And if I can just add that one of the things I appreciate is whenever I visit our liaisons, and I know that when we use the term MTSS, it's one of those terms that not a lot of people understand, but said is the best I can. It's educators passionate about each and every kid achieving and figuring out how to do that in the most precise way possible, which, as Sarah said, can't happen without the information that drives that. I actually have seen such a transformation in the short time as well and I'm very grateful to everybody who is involved in this important work.
Very good. Again, thank you, Sarah and John, for your presentation. Moving on to item nine point three, March is Arts Education Month. Christine.
Thank you. I'm actually going to have Sarah Landry come back up to the podium for her second presentation, which is Arts Education Month.
Welcome, Sarah.
All right. So good evening, trustees. Um, let's talk about Arts Education Month. I am honored to be able to share with you some of the work being done in the arts across our district
that we'd like to highlight this month of March. So our framework here reminds us that it's, the arts is so much more than just about creativity. It's about the person students become while they're creating. And the arts are required subjects in California, and that is wonderful. But what's even more important is how the arts help us develop the whole child. The visual and performing arts standards are grounded in the understanding that an artistically literate person is able to transfer the knowledge, skills, and capacities they're learning in art to other subjects and contexts. So it really is so valuable across the subject areas. Especially, it's been interesting during COVID, we have special musician PPE that has been delivered, so that students could effectively use their instruments in a safe way. We have rehearsals and performances outdoors. In short, our teachers and their students have really acted with some ingenuity to keep our arts programs going through the pandemic. TK through five arts education is teacher-led and student-centered. We see some exciting work here from Montevideo Elementary, and we see a skin color rainbow from Miss Lynn, the art teacher at Vista Grande. And then we also have music instruction at Alamo Elementary. Secondary arts education is really diverse. You see all of the diverse offerings here, everything from ceramics to theater to orchestra to photo, and even more, drama and color guard, video production. And then this is really cool, this is Mr. Williams' advanced ceramics class. Students created vases using patterns such as the fish that you see in the center, and it took a lot of planning patience and perseverance. They look pretty incredible. And here, we have California High School's winter show called Dear Editor. It was actually written by California High School senior Shipra Moses, pretty amazing, and directed by the teacher, Ms. Laura Woods. And so everything for the show was student-driven, from the set design to building lights and costumes. And then, one of the final things I want to share is how exciting it is that we will be returning to our community programs with our band and orchestra festivals, which for students grades four through 12, where our younger students have the opportunity to share their musical prowess with the older students and look up to them where they want to be one day. And our older students get to look back at what it was like to be a young musician, and it really just creates that community across our schools around the arts and music. And then just a reminder here of how important art is in our students' education. It's as important as literacy. Research shows that students who participate in the arts over extended period of time show more sophisticated social and cooperative skills, reduced anxiety and shyness, and reduced aggressive behavior, ultimately allowing students to express their emotions and themselves in more productive ways. And what's really cool is that we are also engaging along the lines of our academic excellence. That steering committee is working very hard to create more equitable access to the arts across all of our schools in our TK through 12 program. So every student has access, because ultimately, an education without the arts is an incomplete education. So, thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Sarah. I'll just comment on your last point, how important it is that arts are not seen as an extra, that it really is incorporated within all of the other academic studies. And just give you one example. Quite a number of years ago, our music programs, particularly the elementary school, were in jeopardy because of budget cuts. This is a number of years ago. And if you think about it, specifically, when you get to those performances where you have the fourth through the 12th graders, it's not hard to imagine, you get rid of fourth, fifth, sixth grade music, and before long, you'll have an orchestra and a band playing at high school level. And so trying to make sure that we continue those programs in an equitable way, a comparable way, across the entire district is extremely important and beneficial to our kids that, you know, that may be the thing for them that really gets them up in the morning, that makes them passionate about continuing their education. So, thank you very much, we all look forward to hearing more about how March goes.
Thank you.
Other board members, anything you'd like to add? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, and item 9.4, Prescription Drug Awareness Month is also in March.
Yes, I'd like to invite up Jessica Colson, one of our coordinators, to present on Prescription Drug Awareness Month.
Thank you.
Good evening, trustees, colleagues, and community. My name is Jessica Colson, and I am the coordinator for social emotional wellbeing and for college and career readiness. I have the distinct honor of presenting two of our colleagues, Sasha Ernst and Kate Brizik. Both of them work at art alternative education schools, so Venture de la Migo and the Virtual Academy. Sasha is a social work, Kate is one of our MTSS liaisons. She also serves as the health coordinator on our curriculum rep council, and they are here to present tonight's presentation for California Prescription Drug Awareness Month, thank you.
Good evening, so we wanted to start this presentation off with the reality of prescription drug abuse. So our first slide actually talks about a statistic from US Department of Health and Human Services that estimates that 48 billion individuals, 12 and older, have at least abused prescription drugs at least once in their lifetime. If we looked at this figure across the United States, it actually comes out to one in five, or 20%. So this is county data, so this is not just our district, but this is some data that was pulled from the County Department of Public Health dashboard. The highlighted red bar is 15 to 19-year-olds, so these are like our high school students and high school students across the county. So the graphic shows overdoses for the emergency department related to benzodiazepines. The second one is any opioid-related overdose, emergency department visit. So you can see that there are significant numbers across the county. This is data from our Healthy Kids survey. So one of the questions that gets asked to our students in high school is about their own use, whether they've used something once or more. And this data refers to the question asked about whether they've used four or more times. So there's a couple trends that I just noted here. There are some things that are hard to know how COVID has impacted. So it's a little bit unclear whether these trends represent a typical year, or whether that was impacted by the fact that a lot of students were home last year. But in general, you can see for yourself that more recently stimulants have been the preferred choice for older students to abuse in the last two years. So our health education, that is in every single high school, which all ninth graders have to take to graduate, as this is a graduation, is really our, like, prevention that we have systematically already built into our high schools. So, right here, I just wanted to showcase some of the work that our health teachers and students are actually doing. And as you could see on this work, the students are doing intense work in researching, case studying, and knowing the effects of prescription drug abuse versus use, right? So they get to really look at what use is and affects the body versus abuse. And that's very important, because we all know that people do use prescription drugs. But it's really the abuse that's the part we really need to educate on. So right here is just a couple more examples. The ones on the right are actually from our students from Independent Study Program, where they actually took a course, or a week-long course, and got a certificate, and then had to create a storyboard in very simplified language to really educate everyone in the community about prescription drug abuse and ways to prevent it. So, we do have some really amazing work being done by our health educators. We also, as you know, have support staff, so our counselors, our school psychologists, our school social workers. So there are sort of three tiers of supports that we are able to offer. At tier one, we present to students, we present to staff, we collaborate with the county offices, the Office of Education, Office of Public Health, we collaborate with the PTA, we support presentations to families for the community, so that everybody can be aware of the information. At tier two, we have Brief Intervention for Substance Use. This is a program that district staff can be trained on through the 2P program at the County Office of Education. And we have collaboration between us and the school site teams, as well as the outside providers. So if we have students that are abusing substances that we are aware of, that when they are at school, that we have a coordinated plan to make sure that they are safe, and to make sure that the families have the resources in the community that they need in order to support their child. At tier three, this might be a student who has gone to a treatment program and has now returned. We collaborate with the outside providers to make sure that there is a smooth process for the student to return to school, so that everybody is on the same page. We have a plan to make sure their needs are supported, and that we also are in communication with the family and any ongoing outside providers, and referring to any community-based resources as needed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you again to Sasha and Kate for presenting.
Thank you very much. Board members, any comments or questions? Seeing none, thank you very much, and it's a really important topic. When I think about, you know, where our kids are getting prescription drugs, I would suspect that a lot of it is actually coming from home. And just a reminder to folks, how many folks actually lock up medicine cabinets? It's something to think about. Thank you very much for your presentation. Next item is 9.5, this is Opportunity for Public Comment for Non-Agendized Items. These are items that are not on our agenda. By open meeting laws, the board cannot get into, take in on anything that's brought up at this point in the agenda. But it's an opportunity for members to public to bring things forward to the board, again, things not on the agenda. This evening, we do have item 10.1, which is going to be talking about COVID-related things. So this would be for non-COVID type of items. At this point, I have several cards. I'm just wondering, does anyone else want to speak besides the cards that I already have? Okay, so the first card that I have, and these are opportunities for speaking up to three minutes. Joni Brodessen.
Okay, my name is Johnny Brodessen. Basically, I'm speaking on this topic from Mike Arada. His wife was ill, and he asked me to follow up on something he's been pursuing the whole time. So I'm going to basically sort of use both our comments. He said, I'm just telling you, I have watched portions of the February 8th board meeting and have spoken with Mike and his public comment that evening, he said he could not be here due to the illness. I was astonished to hear that 15 months ago, your Country Club Elementary principal, Kristy Glazer, which I think there was a comments about it in the book, along with teacher trainer Corby Saunders, described their experience of clearing the classroom to National Council of Teachers of English Members, apparently without consequence. Underlined, I doubt that many parents want their children's classrooms, quoted, cleared. But three months later, Saunders then collaborated with a first-grade teacher, Blair Wyatt, in a separate presentation to discuss how holding fourth and fifth grade LGBTQ meetings during lunchtime helped avoid parental knowledge and concern about such meetings. As Mr. Arada observed, Superintendent Malloy already noted in Toronto for his relationship to those promotions had arrived the prior summer in our area. Quote, "Clearing the classroom and hiding LGBTQ meetings of impressionable children from their parents with no apparent punitive repercussions points either to ignorance and irresponsible dereliction of duty on the part of the district leadership, or to the approval and collaboration by that same leadership." So, nothing, you know, personal here, but if homosexual and transgender activism involving young children, the district cannot be summarily halted with apologies to parents and other taxpayers. Then Mr. Malloy and other persons should possibly leave. And so the final comment here was assault on young minds by tax-paid sexual revolutionaries and gender-bender warriors is the latest major scandal, and it must stop. And it's basically based because of the younger age, that they did not think it was appropriate for elementary school children. So, and basically, he brought it up before about having, you know, literature and things that he thought was related to that, and also the noon time events that are going on for different clubs. And I'm sure it's to help everybody, talking with all this social needs here and awareness, but felt that some of the classes being offered, and some of the clubs being offered, are inappropriate for the elementary school district, without their parents' knowledge.
Thank you. Next speaker, Ben Mendoza. Hold on one second, Mr. Mendoza.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Communicate to the board that all clubs that happen in elementary school are clearly communicated to the parents twice a year. There is an opt-out form that can be used. If anyone has any concerns about how that process is implemented, please talk to your principal, because I just needed to clarify that our process is very different than what you just heard. And it's important for our students who need us the most that I confirm that there is a process for parents in elementary schools to let us know if they do not wish their children to participate in any clubs that exist on the campus during lunchtime.
Thank you. Mr. Mendoza, go ahead.
All right, so my name is Ben Mendoza, I'm a Montevista math teacher, and I'm also a parent of a San Amo Valley High School sophomore. I just wanted to point out that there exists a disparity in the classroom minutes between our four high schools. By classroom minutes, I mean actual minutes in the classroom. For example, the minutes I spend with my second-period algebra students. At the end of last year, a coalition of teachers from all four high schools met virtually to create a bell schedule for this current school year with feedback from their site colleagues. Ideally, or initially, there was a discussion of all four high schools having the same schedule, however, this was scrapped, despite the signed MOU of the Virtual Academy, item number six, that stated all four schools would be on the same schedule. As a result, there's a disparity between the number of classroom minutes a student spends with each teacher in any particular period over the course of a semester between school sites. I don't understand how this is congruent with the district's equity initiative. I would think that the district would want all students at each site to have equal access and maximize their learning opportunities with their teacher. Currently, each site is discussing creating new bell schedules in response to SB 328 separately. My concern is that the current disparity in the classroom minutes between school sites will be institutionalized with this next round of bell schedule bell schedule discussion. Here's an example, I reviewed the first-period classroom minutes for all four high schools in one regular week. Montevista has the fewest, with 234, we used to be 270. Cal-Hi has an average of 235, and Dordi Valley has 250, and San Amo has 254. This may not seem like a big difference, but over the course of the semester, this equates to over a week's worth of classroom minutes between San Amo Valley High and Montevista High. As a Montevista teacher, I'm frustrated, because I've had to cut four weeks of curriculum for the year, as a result of the reduction from 270 minutes we used to have. In addition, with the current Montevista block schedule, I see my students three or two times a week. But the teachers at San Amo and Dordi Valley see their students four or three times a week. So you can see why I bristle when I hear the phrase "deep learning," when I have fewer minutes with my students and contact times. There is an expectation to do more with less time. As a parent of a San Amo Valley High School student, I'm concerned, because I hear rumblings that San Amo Valley High is considering a schedule like Montevista's. I don't want my child receiving fewer classroom minutes with his teacher. I do not want him to have fewer points of contact during the week with his teachers. My request is that you consider a standardization and a maximization, maximization, and of the classroom minutes between the schools. Oops, this is not working. A standardization and maximization of the classroom minutes between the schools in this unified school district, with San Amo and Dordi Valley schedules being the model. With Santa Monica and Dordi Valley schedules being the model. I thank you for your consideration.
And I'm sure Christine's staff is working on one of them. Thank you. Lisa Gross, was this for non-agendized? Okay.
Good evening, trustees. I'm here as a parent of two children in our district. I want to say thank you. Thank you for listening to the voices in our community, partnering with the established parent groups and working to address the many needs of our students. We have very strong parent voices and I appreciate that you hear all of our voices and you respond. I respect that you are charged with making decisions that are neither easy nor popular. Regardless of my personal feelings around many different issues, be it masks, be it school start times, schedules, I know that your decisions are guided by the law and by medical experts at the state and the county. I've observed how our district staff works endless hours to provide what is needed for our students and to address the many challenges. I give this board full credit for getting our children back to school at the earliest opportunity and for keeping our kids as safe as possible. And addressing the challenges as they are arising. I've observed how you work endless hours for what is needed. Whether I agree or disagree, I believe that you are doing everything you possibly can to benefit our students. I know I'm not alone and for that I thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, that's all of the public comment for non-agenda item cards that I had. So we'll move on to item nine point six, which is Association President's Report. Tammy? Tammy?
Yeah, Carrie doesn't want to go at all. Okay, hello, I'm Tammy Castlucio, President of CSEA. I represent over a thousand classified employees in the district. I know that I've been absent from the past three board meetings, but I'm glad to be back with you tonight. On tonight's agenda, you're being asked to take action on the resolution for classified layoffs due to lack of work or lack of funds. CSEA goes through this every year. And since the law changed this year that classified layoffs are on the same timeframe as the teachers, and this is earlier than normal for us. We are, I was pleasantly surprised with the number of layoffs, so that's a good thing, even though the timeframe changed. And CSEA is still working on approval from our field director to ratify, but it should be brought to the membership for a vote sometime next week. CSEA and the district management have been in negotiations since January. Normally, a CSEA is finished with reopen negotiations by this time. Servia finished reopening our negotiations in a record-breaking four sessions. Good job, Laura. SEI, you just finished their negotiations. We're still meeting with the district. We've had some items that needed, that we needed to spend more time on and we are hopeful that we will finish in our next session coming up this Friday. As always, negotiations have been collaborative. I just want to take this opportunity to thank all of the CSEA employees for all of the work they have done to support our students. I want to also remind the board, management and the community that we have roughly thirty-three hundred employees in this district. Seventeen hundred represented by Servia, a little over a thousand represented by CSEA, and roughly three to four hundred represented by SEIU. CSEA has more vacant positions than we have ever had and the most in our district. Management is trying to think outside the box and get creative regarding hiring. In fact, we're having a discussion regarding a temporary MOU to assist with that process. I realize that there are many factors that contribute to the staff shortage and that shortages felt across our state as well as nationally. CSEA has and always is willing to collaborate and be creative with management through this process. Some of the factors that CSEA believes is the problem is the minimal pay and benefits for some of our positions. Unfortunately, these positions are the ones we have the most vacancies in. Let's speak for child nutrition for a moment. Due to the universal meals that were instituted by the governor and, and it looks like they're here to stay. The demands of those employees in those positions have drastically increased. The heavy lifting and speed has increased as well. We are short-staffed at sites, yet the demand still needs to be met. We realize the importance to fill those vacant positions, but we also see the need to invest in the current employees we have. Not only will it, will it not create further vacancies, but it shows our employees that the work they do is recognized and important to management. We feel is just as important to retain the current staff we have and boost morale as it is to fill those vacancies. Let me also say that CSEA is very aware of the, aware of the budgetary restrictions our district is dealing with. But we also need to realize the support of investing in our staff. We want management to keep this in mind as decisions are made regarding staffing challenges. And the importance of retention of employees is imperative that all of our staff are made to feel respected and appreciated in whatever position they hold. Teachers are not the only staff working with our students every day. And whatever happens in this district affects all, all staff equally. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tammy. And we all look forward to hopefully finishing our negotiations successfully very, very soon. Yeah, Carrie.
My name's Carrie Lucchini and I'm the SEIU president. Having just finished our negotiations, we wanted to thank the district's negotiating team, Keith Rijenski, Melanie Jones, Latonya Williams, Craig Sesko, Jason Flores and John Hillman for negotiating with us in good faith. We believe that we agreed, we agreed on contract, contract changes and additions that work for both the district and the SEIU classified employees. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Carrie. And Laura.
Good evening, board. I am honored to stand tonight representing the nearly seventeen hundred non-managerificated staff in SRVUSD. I want to congratulate our labor brothers and sisters in SEIU and management for reaching tentative agreement. Servia is the exclusive representative association for teachers in our district. And it's our charge to oversee the professional rights and responsibilities of our members. And in doing so, as an association, have committed to ensuring our students are our priority. It is no secret that we believe our students deserve the best. The best class sizes and caseloads, the best supports and resources, and the best educators working with them through their educational journey. We are one chapter in the nearly three hundred and twenty-five thousand member-strong California Teachers Association. But as a chapter, our focus continues to remain steadfast on our students here. We are CTA, but we are also the proud union for SRVUSD. I am sure by now that you have heard the California Department of Public Health allowed the current mask mandates for non-school, for non-school indoor venues to expire as of February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. The CDPH guidance for masking in schools, however, is still dependent on safety and science and thus has not yet changed. Masking in schools is still required by CDPH unless the individual has confirmed mask exemption. However, there's a very good possibility that masking in school could change as early as February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. We want to reiterate that our Servia members support our students campaign is all about providing our students the best supports and resources. Safe schools are an essential component of those best supports and resources. As an association, Servia has maintained that we will follow what is safe and legal for our students and school personnel. Our memorandum of understanding ratified by membership states clearly, we will follow CDPH guidance, which is the law to ensure the best science is guiding our student safety guarantees. This has not changed, nor do we expect to renegotiate our twenty-one, twenty-two safety MOU with management to continue to comply with CDPH guidelines. If that means mask mandates are lifted, our students and members will be able to make the choice they are comfortable with in regards to masks, period. This has been our commitment throughout this pandemic. Following CDPH guidelines, we were the first district in Contra Costa County to open our campuses when it was safe and legal to do so. We worked with our management to remain open when recent surges forced other districts to close students' learning. I will be honest and share, it's been frustrating to see our teachers denigrated in social media, even though we have remained student-focused and what is best for our students, giving the orders of the law. It is because we use the single voice of the public health services that we have been able to have consistent agreement with our partners and make sure all of our schools have been safe for all. It needs to be noted that during the pandemic, it has been the partnership of our union, it has been the partnership union has with management and our student-centered focus that is secured for our students' support, such as elementary counselors, additional nurses, social workers and school psychologists. Our commitment to maintaining reasonable class sizes and caseloads so our students receive the attention they need to overcome any gaps, but more importantly, receive the social emotional support they require. Servia members fought hard for Proposition Fifteen, which would have provided the funding to ensure these educational improvements would continue beyond twenty twenty-two. Unfortunately, we were unsuccessful in convincing two percent of those who voted to support students, especially here in the Santa Monica Valley. It is my hope that as we potentially shift into the endemic of phase, of this phase of COVID nineteen, that our community will finally partner with those of us here locally and work with us to ensure that policymakers in Sacramento put our students first. Now, a little bit away from COVID, Servia continues to work with management to finalize the bell schedules for twenty-two, twenty-three and the implementation of the Universal Transitional Kindergarten TK Program. We reached a tentative agreement on a memorandum of understanding for implementing TK, but we are still negotiating the bell schedule for twenty-two, twenty-three. We hope to have a tentative agreement on this soon. As always, Servia members' commitment to providing the best for our students is guiding us. I also would like to take the time to recognize the work in each and every single Servia member. You are true champions for our kids. What you continue to do every day matters. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Laura. Appreciate your comments. Item nine point seven is our Student Board Member Report and I'm pleased to announce that today, two twenty-two, twenty-two, I understand is Ronnet's eighteenth birthday. Is that correct? Well, happy, happy birthday with that slick haircut.
Thank you.
And thank you for spending the evening with us. Go ahead.
So there have been a number of shifting components recently regarding the student body, so it's definitely important time to gauge student opinion as much as possible. I've begun to have discussions surrounding the new schedules with the delayed school start times in light of the new Senate bill that was just passed. And I have a Google Form ready for just gauging student opinion on how they feel about a number of Jews, which will be surrounding the schedule changes, especially the, the ending times being later in the day and having the seventh period towards the end. So I'll be sending that out to the schools and they can offer it to their students who want to chime in with their opinions. And we'll be happy to hear their opinions out because we really want to make sure that they're as happy as possible with the changes that are being implemented, since it is focused on maximizing the benefit for them. So far, what I've gathered is that since schools vary based on their schedules and the status quo, they have different opinions, like the students at different schools have varying opinions on whether they would want school to end earlier or have a built-in break, which is one of the key kind of trade-offs that's important to consider right now, given the later school start times. So what I've found is that when there is an access or support period during a given day, it seems that students don't necessarily believe that a ten to fifteen minute break is of utmost importance, since there is already sort of that built-in break from instructional, like direct instruction or lecture or projects and it kind of gives them a couple of minutes to just catch up and unwind if they, if they so please. However, when there is no other non-instructional period during the day, students definitely do appreciate a little bit of time to take a break for brunch or just to hang out for a few minutes before having to return to their next class. One thing that students in the Senate and across the district were wondering was that, given the changes in schedules across high schools and given the new start and end times with a seventh period being at the end of the day, students were wondering if the high schools will have a standardized bell schedule. So there were some students in support of standardizing it. But there were also students who are like, who like their current bell schedules, which tend to vary from other schools, for example, Cal High, which just alternates with a block. And then there's other schools which have the three days with seven periods and then two block days. So being able to make sure that students are still getting a similar sort of experience across the four high schools will be pretty important with these new changes. Additionally, on a side note with transparency and communication with students, the emails that the district has sent out to the student body with information regarding the new school start times securely and just other information that should be communicated to them has offered an increased level of transparency between the district and its students. However, it does seem that some students may not have received this message. And these were primarily middle school students and they tend to be a bit more confused on some of these issues as well. So I was also wondering if these, if these emails are being sent out to just high schoolers or if they're being sent out to students across all grade levels. Additionally, we will continue to increase transparency and communication with our students through social media and other methods of notifying students apart from just email. I'm working with Director Alana Samuels and we should be getting the ball rolling on creating a team which can create some of these like social media communications and posts and infographics, which will sort of summarize the information in a few like less words and in more student understandable language so that they understand exactly what the district is doing and how these decisions are impacting them. And for the team that will be working on getting this initiative going, we'll have a Google Form to sign up for students primarily at the high school level. Additionally, students are starting to get involved with the district's meal planning services and initiative and work for the next school year and for the following school years. And I think that a lot of students are really appreciative of this opportunity to chime in with their thoughts on the matter. The meal planning and the nutritional part of the school experience has been shifting this year in terms of the way that it works with the free school lunches and with increased participation. So they are really happy to have this opportunity. And I think that there were a lot of sign-ups already on the form that was sent out for students to get involved with that initiative. So we, we are really happy about being able to work on that process. Apart from that, I'm also working with students in the Senate and other student board members across the Contra Costa County to get more signatures for a petition to add a student board member position at the county level, given the recent passing of Assembly Bill eight two four. And we need five hundred signatures and we're currently just a bit over a hundred. So there's still some work necessary that we need to get done over there. But I will be campaigning pretty hard within the next few weeks to get that going. So overall, although there are a lot of changes going on, I really believe that they will allow our students to thrive and prosper more in the future. And I'm excited to see what the next few months unveil for our student body. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnet. Rachel, you have a question for Ron.
Ron, I was hoping I could ask a question. You had mentioned the avenues you're using to get student feedback about the, the potential schedule changes. I was wondering in your form, if you have a way of capturing when you're getting student input about if that student utilizes access for an MTSS intervention or not, just because I think it ties to the earlier presentation because access really isn't a break if you're getting intense intervention. So just in the light of inclusion, I just wondered if you could comment on that.
I can add that section to the form right now. So this hasn't been sent out to any of the schools or the students directly just yet. So I'll add in a section just to understand how students are utilizing their access and support periods to understand that better.
Thank you so much.
And just to our audience, I want to point out that Ronnet, in addition to being our student board member, is also the head of our student senate, which has represented from all of our middle schools and high schools and has done a tremendous job in bringing the student voice here into the boardroom. Really appreciate his efforts and the efforts of those students as well. Thank you.
I have a quick question. Does your questionnaire ask if they're utilizing a seventh period?
No, it did not.
That might affect how they view the schedule.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. And I think I didn't have that section initially because it varies from year to year for students. But I will ask if they have, like in the past, or if they plan to in the future.
Good. Anything else? Okay, moving on to item nine point eight, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, President.
Thank you, President Minson. I appreciate Student Trustee Batra that, you know, you're asked to do something technologically and you can do it in seven seconds in the middle of a meeting, and the rest of us would fumble to figure out exactly how to make that happen. So thank you for continuing to remind us how amazing our students are, and that's the focus I want to share in port tonight with all of the challenges our community schools have faced over the last while. It really dawned on me how seldom we are able to celebrate all the great things that are happening across 36 sites. And so even though I'm not going to use this opportunity to mention students by name, because I think the list would become too long, and we're looking at other ways to incorporate more of these celebrations, not only in our board meetings, but also throughout our community and through our communication, because there's so much that's happening that I think doesn't necessarily get noted beyond the school community itself. So if you'll bear with me, there's just some insights. I just asked widely, what's going on out there that you think needs to be celebrated, or things that we've learned through our schools in the last little while? So two of our schools, Green Brook and Walt Disney, have opened up their gardens for outdoor classrooms and continuing to help their students connect with that learning opportunity in creative ways. Monter during the Words Matter Week really thought deeply about how to connect kids to each other, especially when they might not yet have the friends they need to be healthy. Gale Ranch focused on No Place for Hate lessons with their students in in that very clear commitment to build that community of inclusivity. La Cero sent Puma Palantines, Puma Palantines, that out, to each yet other to brighten their day, while Diablo Vista students attended a leadership conference just last week. Innovation centers are happening at both Charlotte Wood and Gale Ranch. And again, other schools are doing this as well. It's just I asked for the information quickly, and I wanted to offer this. We are so excited that in the Contra Costa Mock Trials, Cal High, first place, Dougherty Valley, second place, with two of our students named as outstanding courtroom journalists and outstanding courtroom artists, again, a major feat of our students. San Ramon High School started Campus Cleanup Club. Cal High and San Ramon have created all kinds of ways to celebrate African-American History Month by really focusing on those African-Americans who have truly made a difference that we don't always hear and know about. Montevista student journalists have published in the Best of Schools newspaper online. Cal High's drama students recently placed at the 2022 Linnea Theater Festival for high school students. Montevista's choir will be singing the National Anthem at the A's game on April 19th. The list goes on and on. We have a junior instrumentalist who's earned a spot as principal flautist in the CA All Staff Symphony Orchestra. And San Ramon Valley High School students have also become finalists in the Contra Costa County Poetry Out Loud Contest. And one of our students, Kate Honsack, actually finished in second place. Sports. Tonight, Mustang's women's basketball team is still competing for the NCS playoffs. Our Dougherty Valley basketball team is in the semifinal tonight. San Ramon Valley High School's women's soccer will play tomorrow in the soccer semifinals. And the list of our student athletes who are showing their expertise and are being recognized by colleges is a list that continues to grow and grow. Academically, we have 10 students this week were announced as the 2022 Candidates for the U.S. Presidential Scholars Program. 10 of our students. And parents who have been willing and students as well to help us with our school meals, that number continues to grow. We've had 110, 110 parents supply, 63 high school students supply, and 71 middle school students supply. I gave you that information in the last meeting, but it's grown. I do not know how Zeta is going to vet that amazing list, but again, it shows an interest in our community and in our students. One of the other exciting things that happens in our region through AXA, which is the administrators organization in California, is they have Administrator of the Year awards each year. And it's really important and exciting for us to announce publicly that Megan Kiefer at Cal High is one of the finalists for Secondary Principal. Very exciting. Christine Kaney for Special Education Administrator of the Year, one of the finalists. And Annabelle Herbert and Tucker Farrar and Justin White and Bridget Voorhees were all nominated. They weren't named as finalists, but again, we are also honoring them for their tremendous leadership. And Cheryl Y. Glass, instrumental music director at San Ramon Valley High School, has, who has 40 years of service to our district, received the David Kadecki Lifetime Achievement Award from the California Band Directors Association. Now, I I know I read that quickly because I know that we've got a lot on our agenda, but I feel that in the midst of everything that we deal with and in the in the midst of all the challenges that we continue to face, great things continue to happen because of our students and staff in the San Ramon Valley Unified School District with the support of parents and community. And I think that my hope by doing this report this way was to continue to shine a light on those real positive examples. And again, let me be clear. There are way more examples like this one. This is not in any way an exhaustive. I don't want anybody to think they've been excluded. I'm hoping this actually propels more of our sites because we're asking to continue to share these perspectives with us, and then we're going to figure out all kinds of creative ways to share these insights. Because I think it's as important for us to be doing that as it is for us to deal with all the important other business that the board and the community have to deal with. But I'm going to close my comments because I think I must, and that is whenever individual staff members or students' names are brought up in this boardroom in a way that doesn't allow for there to be any conversation, because our for our format doesn't always allow it. I do need to say that that's, it's my job to ensure that we look into any concerns that our community may have, and I promise we do that. But I'm also very cognizant to the fact that bringing the issue up in this forum, which is someone's right to do and is maybe that person's perspective and truth, doesn't have the ability to be shared with the persons being named so that they also have voice as well. And also, some of our students have reached out to me. And I'm going to be prepared at another meeting. I'm not prepared tonight because I was obviously preparing for 10.1. And that is when we provide programming for our students, when we provide supportive opportunities for our students, it's aligned with our strategic directions that says we're looking after each student. And though I understand that members of our community might have different perspectives, and we want to hear that, our students are also asking me personally how we're standing up for their voices and their experiences, especially when they might be unwilling to come into this room at this time. Some of our students who identify as LGBTQ have said that they're not necessarily feeling safe right now. And I'm saying that not to cause any other challenge except to say, regardless of anyone's perspective, each and every student in our district, as you have declared through our strategic directions, needs to be safe, needs to be accepted, and needs to be included, and we need to continue to work on that. And I will be more prepared at another meeting challenged by our students that even though anyone has the right to come to the microphone and share their perspective, that we also, in my role and in our role, also if our students' voices are not comfortable coming into this space, that I figure out with you ways to ensure that their voices come into this space just so that you are able to hear that broad perspective, that our goal is always to serve each and every student, to keep them safe, to respect who they are, to honor their identities, and to work with our families to be sure that our kids with the best possibilities ahead of them. So I just felt at the end of that wonderfully positive illustration of all that's going on here, I thank you for the indulgence to add that other part to my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Malloy. Moving on to action items now. 10.1, Consideration of SRV USD Continuing to Follow the Guiding Principle to Fulfill But Not Exceed the Recommendation of Both State and County Public Health Authorities Regarding COVID-19 Mitigation. This is an action item, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Malloy.
Thank you. Thank you, President Minns. I think I prefer doing the other report better, but this is an important one. Board members and to our entire community who is here tonight and to our entire community who is watching online. Before you tonight is my recommendation that we continue to fulfill and not exceed public health requirements with regard to COVID mitigation. While we have been following this guiding principle regarding all matters related to this pandemic, tonight we are talking specifically about masks. Masking requirements are in the news, both mainstream and social media, and the subject is on the minds of many members of our school community. I'm going to ask your indulgence as I share this report because I've taken a considerable amount of time to study the complexity of this situation and wish to offer you some of those contextual insights. To begin, I want to remind the board that the California Department of Public Health is now preparing its position on when masking requirements for schools will be modified, specifically and according to the governor, when the masking requirement will be lifted. We are eagerly awaiting this announcement, which is set for Monday, February 28th, four school days from today. Masking has been controversial from the outset of this complicated and emotional journey. We hear all points of view on this subject. Mask. Do not mask. Make it option. Excuse me, make it optional. And we do as a board and senior staff hear a range of opinions. And I want to stress that I know this board, our staff, and I fully respect the fact that everyone is entitled to their opinion. But we have not set our principles for pandemic management since the beginning on opinions, because as you know, many different opinions exist in our community. We have set them based on the direction from the legal and rule-making authority, which is public health. I would like to comment on some observations from across our district that I am sure is not a surprise to any of us. This has been divisive and polarizing, exhausting and challenging. I hear our educational professionals across this organization saying that we have not experienced anything like it in our careers. We are so concerned about our students. We know that the last two years have had a challenging impact on our students. Yes, we are concerned about our staff. They have done everything they can to support our students during these challenging two years. They have been and continue to be remarkable in their steadfast dedication to serve the students in their care. And we are concerned about our parents and the community members who are expressing various perspectives regarding what we need to do now. Some are very frustrated by the irony that masks are lifted in restaurants, but not in schools. I understand, and I understand the frustration that that's causing. Beyond masking, there are divergent points of view about the pandemic. Some parents and families have been angry at most school districts for the last two years, believing that students should have been in school since the beginning. Others are deeply concerned, especially if there are immunocompromised family members or other challenges in their home. We have parents and families who are supportive of the guiding principle to fulfill and not exceed public health requirements and have asked you to stay the course. And we have parents who are so angry with public health, with us, with our union colleagues, and they have shared this anger and frustration in so many different ways. While there is a wide range of opinions, and we all get that, one thing does unite us, I believe. At this point, we are all tired of COVID-19 and its impacts. Next Monday, the Department of Public Health, as I shared, is set to release new directions on masking requirements in our schools. At this time, we continue to follow the directions set by public health. And the recommendation is to stay the course because we are following that guiding principle with your approval, which means that our masking requirement remains for now. However, as soon as this requirement changes, the board agrees tonight that the mask mandate will be lifted immediately as long as both the state and the county make this decision. We would not need any additional board meetings if you approve this direction tonight. A couple of clarifying comments before I close. On behalf of the Board of Trustees in our community, I have certainly emphasized in my discussions with public health that mandates are making less sense to many. When the mask mandate is being lifted in most places, the reason that mask mandates remain in schools has to be clearly articulated if it is to stay, which I hope it's not. And we need clarity about how the mask mandate will change in the near future. That said, I am not, we're not, and we've said this all along, public health experts. Public health is charged with, and I'm using this right from their webpage, promoting the welfare of the entire population, ensuring its security, and protecting it from the spread of infectious disease and environmental hazards. These responsibilities are not our area of expertise. This is why I do not believe we are in a position to advocate for change to public health's requirements. Rather, I would recommend we should advocate vigorously for clarity about when this mandate will be lifted. We have all heard that Roseville Joint Union High School District has decided not to follow this mandate, and they have already been warned that they will not be covered by their insurance provider if anyone sues them for any related issue because of their decision. I cannot advise risking this liability. Our legal counsel, because we are all in different what's called GPAs, all of our insurance providers are different. Our legal counsel is advised, and our own insurance provider has advised and required that we must follow this mandate in order for us not to be liable.
Excuse me. There'll be an opportunity for public comment.
The important piece that I need to stress is what you just heard me read is actually something that we can share so that you can receive the actual wording that we received that supports what you just heard us say regarding our community, our provider, and our requirements. I'm not making this up. Some believe that we don't wish to move forward in the ways in which I have described, and I promise you that we are doing everything we can to learn, to listen, to advocate, to challenge, but there are some realities that are not within our control. I want to also say, as a teacher myself, that I'm watching with interest the messages on social media where some adults are urging students to defy the masking rule, take them off, insist on staying in class and so forth. I want to say that I'm not hearing this widely in our district. Parents always have the choice to make their own decisions. That's not what I'm talking about. But I'm glad we're not hearing this widely in our in our district because we teach our students that we do not ignore or break rules. But if we don't like it or agree with it, we find a productive and appropriate ways to advocate for change. That is always part of this. But we've taught that lesson. We know we partner with our community around that lesson, and I'm grateful that this is not something we're hearing widely across our 36 sites. In closing, and before we open public comments, I want to ask everyone in our school community to please remember that the school board, nor I, possess the authority to change the masking regulation. Further, regardless of the different perspectives that exist, no one is to blame for the situation we are in. We understand that we need a resolution to this masking issue as soon as possible for our students. But unfortunately, for those who wish the regulations to change immediately, our legal counsel, our insurance provider, has confirmed that we must follow masking requirements until this is changed by the state and county. As I say this, I understand that some members of our community have different views regarding their mask mandate, this mask mandate, and may not agree with this recommendation. My hope is that any protests to this mandate are shared with those who make these decisions and that you as a board do decide tonight to advocate for the clarity that I've described and that we continue to support our students and staff in what we hope is days of this mask mandate and frankly, the final days, we hope, of this pandemic. Thank you for your indulgence. I know this was a long report, but we were trying to capture in a way all of the sentiments in our community. We're trying to lean in as far as we can to acknowledge the different views, to be as compassionate as possible regarding how to move forward. And I am here with my team to answer any questions you might have before turning it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Malloy. Board members, do you have any questions for clarification prior to? Board members, do you have any questions for clarification prior to public comment? Go ahead, Laura. Why don't you start?
Dr. Malloy, how often do you meet with public health as a superintendent?
So we've met at least every other Monday since the pandemic started, but up until about a month or two ago, it was every Monday.
And in those meetings, do you have an opportunity to provide insight about how the mandates are affecting our school district and our students in our school district?
I know that our public health colleagues are under their own stresses, but I am very able to share with our board and our community that those meetings are very honest, transparent, sometimes difficult, as all 18 superintendents in the county share everything we're dealing with, everything we're hearing, and every request and requirement we have related to this pandemic. And that has been part of the working relationship over the last almost two years.
Any other question?
Yeah, and then I guess another question in this, you know, kind of based on some of our email public comments. We had a lot of those, which I'm very appreciative of. What happens when a student doesn't wear a mask in a classroom?
So at this time, when a student chooses not to, or doesn't want to, or has been told not to wear a mask, the teacher would provide that mask. If there is still a concern regarding that, then the principal would be involved. And if the student is still unwilling to wear a mask at this time, then the parents are contacted.
Thank you.
Suzanne, did you have a question? Any other from the board? Laura, did you have another question?
I think your report kind of answered some of the other questions I had, so I think I'm good at this point.
Okay, I have a number of speaker cards for this evening. Is there anyone else who would like to submit a speaker card before we get started? Otherwise, this will be the list of folks who are talking this evening on this topic. Seeing none. You'll have an opportunity to speak up to three minutes. We ask you to use your time as succinctly as possible so we can work our way through this item. If you've heard similar comments from other speakers, and you can just say that you agree with them, and keeping your comments shorter, that will help us move through more quickly. I also would ask for all of you to be respectful of each other, your opinions that may be different. In this forum, which is a working meeting of the school board, we really do try to be role models for our students. And I'm hoping that all the adults in this room can do the same. First speaker, John Besman, Besmer. The next person will be Joni Broderson. You have three minutes.
Thank you.
And please, before we get started, I will be cutting you off at three minutes. We really do need to stay on track. We have a large agenda still this evening after this item. Thank you.
Where there is risk, there also must be choice. Masking children is risky. By we, the parents, are no longer asking for but demanding for mask choice now. When this board mirrors the CDC stance on masking policy and subsequently the CDPH, also known that the CDPH relying on the CDC uses their own journal called the MMWR. It's not subject to independent peer reviewing. This is a flawed way to decide COVID policy. Public trust in this and many other school boards is being eroded daily. Remember, if we can't question it, it's propaganda. Conversely, the Maricopa, Kansas, and Danish mask studies are all peer-reviewed articles stating the ineffectiveness and psychological damage caused by masking. A school board that masks its children is no different to Middle Eastern countries that mask their women. The desire to mask someone in the name of safety is always the desire to rule them. This masking silliness is about compliance, is about compliance, not science. And at its core, it is bullying. It's an obvious consequence of a compliance narrative. It's also a common feature of a weak system to signal its unquestioned support for authorities above it, like the CDPH. As we see in the Roseville and now the El Dorado school districts, the boards can vote the masks off. This vote took place because of concern, parental pressure. And let me put you all on notice, what happened in the San Francisco recall of three school board members could easily happen here. And this school board sits here unapologetically, for the most part, ignoring the physical and mental damages happening to our kids. And we, as parents, don't want our kids living in a perpetual disease state of mind where people are considered sick until proven healthy. This board has a shared denial of reality, and so does the school union right here, represented. The support to cut off oxygen of our children in the name of science, this is not science, this is child abuse. Any board that wants to cut off children's oxygen and risk hypercapnia, which is too much oxygen in someone's blood with a face covering, is a board that will be held accountable. What about the teachers? Do you think that they would vote for mask choice also? I do, yet they have no voice in this arena. Let's get them involved. And this mindset of making COVID zero, zero COVID in schools eventually makes hell. There's no polite way to tell you that you've all been fooled about masking by scientific fraud. The CDC has been hiding data about this pandemic for the last two years, in case you haven't read recently. And as Albert Einstein said, blind belief in authority is the greatest enemy of truth.
Next speaker, please, if you don't mind, if you don't mind keeping the applause to a minimum. Joni Broderson. Speaker after that will be Julian Broderson.
I come up from, I come from sort of a different view here. I'm not the parent of a child here, but I'm a volunteer that works in the school district. Some of the things I was going to talk to relate to comments were made a week ago. So I know I've also have the whole agenda that talks about the mandate, you know, and what's transpired in the February 28th. However, I'm coming from a point of volunteer that's been working with second graders in the Contra Costa County, not necessarily these schools here, but just in Walnut Creek. So I'm coming from a personal point in support of parents to get these masks off, and I've been working on it through the school districts for quite a long time. I'm here to comment on the district response on this. And on February 15th, the local news said parents felt masks threatened children's education and social and emotional well-being. Well, I've seen that firsthand. I actually work and help with, I'll say that, Assistant Slade of Diablo Valley, and we work throughout the Contra Costa County. We go into schools and we read the second graders and we leave the books. But I talked about the literature before, and we try to get something that is got a certificate to. I'm also trying to say that an op-ed in the East Bay Times got a little bit vocal this week and said, if educators and the governor's wife were generally interested in safeguarding young minds, they would do more in their power to end these mask mandates now. And it probably should have been done earlier. I'm a volunteer in an elementary school. Okay, we work with the second graders. We help them with their reading, so I was impressed with all the reading things that you're doing. But as a volunteer, we go in, we work one-on-one. The teachers now, because of the pandemic, are sending probably half of their second grade classes to us that are at first grade level in the second grade. So because of that, I feel like the mask has a lot to do with that. So my mass, my concern was for those that did not learn a lot when they were kindergarten, first grade, obviously on remote learning. Some of them went to a babysitter. I have one event. I have a child that is shy, lacking, at the first grade level. We use flashcards and easy stories to help them catch up. This is a way, and we also time them. We go give them four chances and see where they measure up. I have one little girl now, and we are now in February. In fact, we weren't allowed in the schools to go in and volunteer last fall yet. But anyway, we've come in, I have more than one child. But this one child specifically, I've watched where they're wearing masks outside in the school. I don't know about the playground per se, but they are still wearing them when they're outside. So I don't think the out of the air, at least in some schools, they've taken the masks off. This little girl's come to, she is now, I've got her dumbed down to now, and she's not ill or anything. She just didn't get a chance to learn. And the mask now has caused her to be socially, I guess I want to say dependent, because they can't socialize. You can't talk a lot when you don't have a mask on, and you can't with other kids. She's come into the class, and she's now learning words like at, the, whatever, and she's in second grade.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, Julian Broderson, followed by Ben Mendoza.
Hi, good evening. I'm a parent of three and an actively involved volunteer at Vista Grande Elementary. I love our school, our teachers, and administration. I feel lucky to send our kids here every day. I'm asking the board to be our advocates in lifting the mask mandates. It's time that we work together as parents and teachers and administrators for the sake of our kids. Across the country, kids have been mask optional for the greater part of the year. And earlier this month, our state lifted the mask mandates for all but indoor settings, excuse me, school settings. Yesterday, my kids and I celebrated the long weekend roller skating indoors mask optional. We went to the grocery store, again, mask optional. When literally every part of our day outside of them going to school is mask optional, I question the motivation to keep the mandates in the school settings. We aren't limiting the spread of COVID-19. Our kids, and quite frankly, staff members, aren't having to wear them outside of school. The only thing that masks are doing at this point is inhibiting our kids' learning and damaging their psyche. I hear stories of high school students walking off campuses and wearing their masks across their chin in our district. The mask mandate in school isn't working. My kids are in elementary school. They're dedicated rule followers, but the mandates are hurting them. My 11-year-old wears her mask every day at school and has a nasty rash around her mouth and nose to show for it. After watching the Super Bowl footage, she asked me if she could use a square word. This was the first time. She described the mandates as BS. Baby girl, I agree. The mask mandates at school aren't working. My eight-year-old comedian came home from school laughing and dancing around the house a few weeks ago in his district-given N95 mask. It was an adult size and outrageously big for his little eight-year-old face. The ridiculousness of this wasn't lost on him. It was a laughable solution. The mask mandate at school isn't working. My five-year-old is utterly confused. He panics when he doesn't have a mask. It breaks my heart when he tries to find logic and why he doesn't have to wear a mask inside stores but does at TK. Oh, Mom, I get it. We don't need to wear a mask here because there's no coronavirus in the bagel store. Hmm, darling, that's not exactly correct. And unfortunately, I don't have another answer that will make logical sense for your smart little mind either. The mask mandate at school isn't working. It's time, SRVUSD, it's time to be our kids' advocates. It's time to work together. The kids can't do it alone. The parents can't do it alone. We need your voice. As I walk through our community, I see many people still wearing their masks, and I see many without them. This is exactly how a lifted mandate should be. It's not all or nothing. It's about a choice, and we're asking for your help in giving our kids that choice. Thank you.
Ben Mendoza, followed by Jamie Smith.
All right, good evening. My name is Mendoza. I'm a teacher at Montevista and also a parent of an SRV sophomore. I want you to know that not all teachers support universal masking for our students. Even those colleagues that disagree with my stance on masking will agree that teaching and learning with masks has been challenging on many levels. Just last week, Press Secretary Jen Psaki stated that local school districts have always had the authority to mandate masking or not. In fact, their districts, as we've mentioned earlier, in California, have bravely declared the policy of mask choice for its students departing from the state and local policy. Ideally, I would like to see this board pass a resolution tonight that would make masks optional for our staff and students. But I know this board has taken the approach of strictly adhering to the county requirements and will likely continue to do so. My understanding that the state may be reevaluating this policy next week. So my request is that you pass a resolution tonight that will immediately dissolve the current policy without this board having to reconvene when the state or county policy changes. Absent of that, will this board please pledge to reconvene in an emergency meeting immediately to pass the least restrictive policy for masking for our students and staff? One question that occurred to me was, what happens if there's a contradiction in policy between state and county? You know, state is more restrictive, county is least, or the other way around? How do we reconcile? And then another thought that occurred was, just because there is a law, doesn't mean it's justified. We can just think of people like Rosa Parks, Martin Luther King. We can think about the Japanese internment, which was 100% legal. That was a law. And is a disgrace. You can think of Mahatma Gandhi and what he did to promote peaceful protest to initiate change. Nelson Mandela. And we could go on. So just because there's a law, that doesn't mean it's justified. And to say that we should just comply is frankly un-American. I would just ask you to please consider my questions, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Jamie Smith, followed by Daryl Babada.
Dear Superintendent and Board Trustees, my name is Jamie Smith, and my children are students here in the Santa Monica Valley Unified School District. I appreciate your time tonight. I come here tonight as a parent who also grew up in Danville. Upon getting married, I was adamant that my husband and I settle and raise our three children here because of the community, and most importantly, because of the quality of the schools. The last two years have been a logistical nightmare for everyone here, and I do understand that. I do not envy the position anyone has been in. Each of our schools have had, that my kids are at, have amazing principals, the administration, the teachers. I truly cannot thank them enough. But I am here tonight because I believe, as I believe us, us as parents, should be given the right to choose whether or not our kids, who we've been protecting since the day they were born, have, you know, if we want to put them in a mask or not. When the pandemic began, the lack of knowledge about COVID-19 justified the mandates. However, that excuse has vanished. We have heard recently, routinely over the last two years, that we need to follow the science. But what the science has really told us, per the CDC, there are less children's deaths from COVID-19 in the last 18 months than each of the prior four years from the common flu with vaccines widely available. If any of this followed logistical science, I really would not be standing here today. I just cannot sit back and watch the mental, physical, and spiritual well-being of our children suffer. It feels like all pain and no gain for our kids. My first grader is struggling so much. He is currently in this great MTSS program for reading intervention, because he did kindergarten virtually, cried all the time. Got to first grade, he's so behind, and he told me he can't understand phonetically what the teacher's ever saying because they're sounding out words and he can't tell with the masks. And he says he can hardly hear a speaker or his teacher speaking, and it's just hard. He's just really struggling. My daughter, who's in seventh grade, loves Danville more than anybody I know, has recently seen so many friends state, and she is begging me to move. She wants to move so she can just go to school normal again. I have a personal example I want to share. My husband and I are vaccinated. My kids had a minor fever during Christmas break and prompted us to test, which came back positive. And then we were positive too. Prior to testing, my kids were with my 91-year-old grandma, my 75-year-old in-laws, and none of them tested positive, which was a huge relief. And they're boosted and they're vaccinated, and I felt like they're protected. My kids did not pass it over to them. And I only say that is because the governor argues we need to shove masks over our kids' face. Food for thought. California was the 50th state of the union to reopen schools. After 228, I believe, only five states will still mandate the schools. All 45 other states have removed the mandate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Daryl Babada, followed by Ben Horn.
Yeah, thank you. Daryl Babada fathered two students. One is still in the school district, the other's not. As another commenter mentioned, the science hasn't changed. The virus has always been 1/8 the size of the holes on an N95 mask, and a 1% air gap has always reduced the efficacy by over 50%. It's been two years now, and there's been one thing that's been abundantly clear, and it's that children mask-wearing has always been the least justified and carries the most potential for harm. As a parent, my primary responsibility is to care for my child's best interests. My wife recalled by God to be ultimately responsible for their well-being, not a school administrator, not a politician. I think that as a country and a community, as a society, we're going down a very dangerous road that reflects a 0% success rate historically. That pledge of allegiance that we said means something to me. I fought for that flag, and we are a long way from liberty and indivisible. So far, we have heard terms like student voice, parent voice, diversity and unity, and student connection and inclusivity. Our voices aren't being heard. Instead, we're being forced with conformity, which is counterproductive to diversity. And unity doesn't mean that we're all the same. Unity means that we have a mutual respect to each other's ability to hold other views. This has been all but shut out, and as a community, this should concern all of us. My son, at the beginning of his middle school tenure, had already received countless detentions and a separation from his peers because his mask would fall under his nose or he would step outside to catch his breath. This conflict of conscience came when the principal called me in to enforce her mask mandate. As a parent, I could see that this was more harmful for my child than it was good and could not in good conscience concede. He's now flourishing in homeschool, and we are faced with a difficult decision, the same one for my daughter now. Many people are attacking the idea of individual liberty as if it's a selfish idea. I'd like to educate you on the significance of free will. Our rights are not given by school boards or governments. They're inalienable and endowed by our Creator. When God created this world, He could have made an amoral world with no ability to choose between good and evil. He could have made a world with autonomy where we could only choose good. He didn't either, but instead gave us free will and the ability to choose between right and wrong. This free will is the only version of creation that allows for love. So liberty is a predicate for love, being able to flourish. Freedom is the one single differentiator in our country that has allowed us to become the global superpower faster than any other nation. It's what allowed our country to flourish with arts and sciences. It's why we're the diversity Mecca of the world. It's why our Olympic team looks like it was made up from members of each other Olympic team. Freedom has made all of this possible in the very fabric of who we are and the reason why we're here. Freedom is our guiding ethic so that love could reign supreme. And I think that we can all agree that love wins. Everything we hold dear relies on our ability to respect and acknowledge each of our ability to make individually choices, individual choices that we see fit and answer to our Creator. Regardless of the authority of directives, I have the responsibility to do what's right. My daughter has just learned about Dr. Martin Luther King and his fight. She was encouraged to stand up for what she believed. This is what we believe, and I believe the mask presents more harm than good and any mandates. This is the social justice movement in our era. For that reason, I'll be acting in Dr. King's example, and we will not resume the school until they're lifted.
Ben Horn, followed by Lacey Lowe.
For your service, I'm going to try and address the whole room. My name's Ben Horn. I live in Danville with my wife and daughters, age seven and five. I've lived here all my life. I'd like to think our speaking here tonight could have some difference considering school districts across the country are making their own mask policy, and Secretary Jen Psaki reiterated this recently. As we probably all know, millions of kids across the United States and Europe have enjoyed their schooling unmasked for the past six, 12, even up to 18 months. They have been living a normal childhood. And since I'm aware of the fact that people here in California are a little more concerned about COVID, I'll read from a short letter that I think is pretty balanced on the topic and well-stated. It's titled "An Open Call to Restore Normalcy for U.S. Children." It's signed by 1,260 doctors and medical professionals. "In much of the United States, adults have the option of returning to life essentially as we knew in 2019. However, children continue to experience disproportionate restrictions, and the costs are mounting. Youth depression, suspected suicide attempts, drug overdose deaths, and obesity have all risen dramatically during the pandemic. The American Academy of Pediatrics has also declared a mental health emergency for our kids. The unintended consequences of pandemic restrictions are now a greater risk to our children than COVID, and we must act on that reality. Meanwhile, children's already low risk from COVID has become even lower. Vaccines are available to children five and up, and the Omicron variants causing milder disease and vaccines continue to be extremely protective against severe disease in the Omicron era. Based on a careful review of all this evidence, we believe it is time to allow children the same return to normalcy that adults have enjoyed. Children's schools athletics and activities should be restored to their 2019 norms. Masks should become optional in U.S. schools, we suggest by February 15th last week. And we can also pre-pandemic norms or quarantines. If you're sick, stay home. We can and should protect medically vulnerable children and adults using focused protection strategies to protect individuals at risk as we did in the years before COVID, rather than prolonging harmful restrictions on all children. In order to make these shifts, we must reassure families about the low risk to children from COVID infections in the Omicron area and also from long COVID. We must also share the best available evidence on the benefits and harms of COVID mitigation measures affecting children, which can reassure families, educators, policymakers of all who care for children's well about the safety and healthfulness of return to normalcy for kids. They attach some supporting material. With a recent poll shows 65% of parents are more concerned about their child missing out on education than getting COVID at school. So you know, I urge you, you guys, to not just point to the right and say, "It's not my job." Please be brave and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Lacey Lowe. Followed by Jackie Waters.
Hello. Nice to see you. I'm a middle school teacher here in the district and I'm super happy. Love my job, love the kids, love my school. I did want to come here. I feel like teachers are, we're the union, we're the, we're some kind of monolith of one singularity of thinking. I am pro-choice for masks. I would like to see that as soon as possible. I'm not the only teacher at my school who feels this way. I coach sports, after-school sports at the middle school, and I recently ran into a seventh grader. I teach eighth grade. But I like to coach the younger kids and try to get them into Spanish class. But I saw him, and I had my mask off during break, and I was doing some supervision. And he had his mask on. I'm like, "Hey, how are you doing?" And he goes, "I don't want to be rude. Who are you? How do I know you?" And it just broke my heart. We spent five weeks together doing sports, but he didn't know who I was. Just to see me without my mask, it was like, I wasn't in the right place in the right context. And it just broke my heart, and I thought, our kids, I have never seen the kids suffer more than they are this year. It is destructive. Kids are being destructive at school. They're having foul language. They're getting into more fights. I mean, I don't want to be a downer, but it is crazy. And I think about when someone had that example of the iceberg. That's exactly right. Like, we're going along, but underneath, there's so many unintended consequences. I would like to see, I would feel better as an educator. I would like to know, what is the specific off-ramp? Whenever we surrender as a society, our rights to emergency powers, that emergency power is not often yielded back. And so I would like to know, what are the exact stipulations they're looking for in order to have mask choice? I mean, some kids are fine with it, and a lot of kids are not. And especially at the younger ages, and especially elementary, they want to be obedient. They don't want to disobey. They don't want to be put out. They don't want their teachers to think bad of them. They don't want to put their teachers' families in danger. There's so many pressures on them just to perform for the adults in their life, and they don't know what's happening. They can't voice what's happening. But every teacher I talk to at all the different schools, we're all seeing this just tremendous, like, is this because of the COVID lockdown the last year? Or is this that they're so happy the learning has increased so much from, I still teach a virtual class, the Virtual Academy. This is the hardest I've ever taught with Virtual Academy. It's terrible. And so my kids in person are much better off, but the behaviors we're seeing in school is outrageous. And I'm positive because it's that lack of connection. Please give us the pathway to mask choice. Give us the pathway. What are the specifics that need to happen, not just when the state says so? What is, push, 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 please, on the county level. Thank you.
Next speaker, Jackie Waters. Followed by Katie Haina.
Hi, I'm Jackie Waters, and I am a parent of four in the district at Rancho Stone Valley and SRV. I agree with basically everything everyone has said before me, but I just wanted to add on a few things about being an advocate for mask choice here. I think a lot of the frustration that's coming from the parents is the deflection that we keep seeing, specifically where we see the governor saying it's the teachers' union, and the union says it's the CDPH guidance, and the CDPH says they're actually leaving it up to each district. So you've also mentioned insurance and liability issues. What would those be, and how are the other districts going around that, that have basically pulled back from the masking mandates? It seems to be a little bit of wordplay that they're doing where they're educating the students still on masking, but they're not punishing students for masking. So again, we'd love to know more about that and get the masks off the kids.
Next speaker, Katie Haina. Followed by Ryan Menke.
I just want to say happy 18th birthday. Hope it's a good one. Good evening. My name is Katie Haina. I live in Alamo, and I'm a mother of four young children, two of which attend kindergarten at Rancho Romero. I'm also a former teacher, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm here to advocate for mask choice. The chorus of child advocates is growing louder. Doctors and public health experts are now calling for the end of mask mandates in school in the face of a devastating mental health crisis among our youth and skyrocketing speech and learning delays. This is just the tip of the iceberg. We are only beginning to see the impact of the experiment on children the last two years. Your role is to advocate on behalf of students. Board members are the only locally elected officials chosen solely to represent the interests of children. The time to advocate for the whole child is now. Please don't abdicate your responsibility. California is one of just a few remaining states with mask mandates in school. There's no high-quality evidence that shows mask mandates reduce transmission. And in evidence-based medicine, the burden of proof is on the intervention, not the norm. The norm is seeing human faces. Adults here are unburdened and free to eat, drink, party, and socialize at packed indoor bars while our children have yet to see friends' faces or their kindergarten teachers' smile in class. After two years of treating children as vectors of disease, it's easy to dismiss their developmental and emotional needs. Unmasking kids is not a fringe idea, but one based in sound, science, and data. And it's something millions of kids across the country have been experiencing the entire school year. In our state, several districts have put the well-being of kids first and stopped enforcing masking as a condition to attend school. I'm asking that you do the same. Please lead with common sense. Partner with students and parents by letting them choose based on their own individual risk assessment. Let's work together to prioritize the health and safety of every child in the district. Amen.
Thank you. Ryan Menke, followed by Gina Cummings.
Hello, my name is Ryan Menke. I'm a parent here in the district for 16 years, five kids total throughout Vista Grande, Los Ceros, and Monta Vista, three still at Monta Vista. I'd like to ask the board, well, let me also say, I've been a professional firefighter, paramedic for 26 years. I dealt with the pandemic from day one when we were not vaccinated alongside Walgreens employees and Target employees and fast food workers that didn't quit their jobs and didn't stay home to be protected. It's very frustrating. I get the beginning of the pandemic. None of us in the world knew the complexity of it or the detriment that it could prove to be to society. I get why we were masked in the beginning. I get why we were afraid in the beginning. But since that time, we have learned so much information from respectable studies throughout the world in different countries. And if we don't pay attention to that data and actually look at it, then what good are we doing? It's very difficult to be a leader. It's very difficult to make difficult decisions and hard decisions that not everybody likes. But that's one of the things about being a leader that is important. And you all up here, I don't pretend that you have an easy job. I really don't. I realize you have a lot of opposition. I realize you have to make decisions that are tough. That being said, you were elected to make those decisions. And if you want to be fair and equal to all of the people that you represent, you have to look at both sides. You don't just represent the people that believe in masks and want the masks. You also represent hundreds and hundreds, probably thousands, of families that feel the complete opposite. If you want to be a leader and you want to do your job and you want to look at the science and you want to actually ask yourself, "Who do I want to be when this pandemic is over? Who do I want to be when history looks back at itself in five years, 10 years, 20 years? What side of this do you want to be on?" This is a difficult decision. But now that we know what we know, I don't feel that it's that difficult. Our kids are suffering. I ran a Dads on Campus program for three years at Vista High School. We had many presenters that came in talking about suicide, depression, anxiety. Those levels have skyrocketed since this pandemic. So I don't always believe what I hear when we say that we take the kids' best interest in mind and we're doing what is best for them. Because if you were, you would really stop and take a hard look at this and say, "Is this really the best interest of our children?" Because the best interest of our children is not to be miserable, sad, depressed, anxiety, social ineptitude. Everything about our children right now is different, and this is unacceptable. So I ask, when you leave here, when the door is closed, when you go home, when you lay in bed by yourself at night, who do you want to be when this is all over, and what decision did you want to make? That's really an important question that you want to ask yourself. It's time for the masks to come off. I hope next week the district makes that choice. But at the same time, the district right now could fight for our kids and have mask choices as what they want. We don't need to be followers of the state or other counties. We don't need to follow what someone tells us. Let's be leaders. Let's make decisions based off facts and science, not off politics and not wanting to rock the boat. Thank you.
Gina Cummings, followed by Nicole Porter.
Hi, my name's Gina Cummings. I grew up in Danville. I'm a registered nurse with my Master's of Science in Nursing. With an infinite emphasis on clinical nurse leadership. As you can tell, I've lost my voice. I was in the near death cracks when I was 20, coming from college. It's what drove me to become a nurse, and it's what's driven me to be obsessed with the data alongside my emphasis in clinical nurse leadership since the beginning of this pandemic. In the beginning, I, like many others, was very fearful. I have a compromised O.A., so that makes me extremely susceptible to wrong kinds of xenophobia. So I spent probably the first three months of the pandemic with sleepless nights, digging through the research, coming out as readily as was available. Just to ensure that I was not looking at television or politics, but making decisions based off of science and evidence and practical policies and procedures. There was a study that came out of Italy in April of 2020 that showed that this pandemic was going to be detrimental to those patients that were already at risk dependent on pharmaceuticals within our medical system. We've discussed since the day when the pandemic began that patients and populations such as those with diabetes type 2, hypertension, hyperlipidemia, chronic obstructive pulmonary disease would be the ones most at risk for severe outcomes. Our children are not in this patient population. When COVID hit, I was deep in the information. We knew that those with the most at-risk at developing severe complications were the ones that I've mentioned. Over the past two years, 64 children have died in California from COVID-19. That's 32 a year. Our role tried to get COVID-19 under control and profiled reasonable interventions. Our children run into sacrifices. They socially distance. They cohort it. They plot it. They mask. They vaccinate it. And now they're being used as political bonds and sacrificed with 36 to 38 hours a week in classrooms with masks.
Thank you for your comment.
I'd like to ask for a note more time because it's difficult for me to talk as fast as everybody else. Thank you. For the past two years, as parents, we've protected that risk while the hospitals and medical personnel figured out staffing needs and therapeutics. We have all endured, and thank you for your contributions. But our children have been left behind. Learning curves have changed. Speech delays are present, and mental health crisis is... And mental health crisis is spiraling out of control with young women developing anorexia, depression, and in some cases, suicide. That is from the head of COVID protocol at UCSF.
Gina, please try to finish up.
Yeah, I just need one more minute. Our children are harassed at school to keep their masks over their nose instead of focusing on curriculum. They have been continually threatened to go to the principal's office if their mask is not properly done, which in fact, we know the CDC states that cloth and surgical masks do not prevent transmission or infection by aerosol viruses. We've spent the last two years using ineffective interventions and we are still implementing that. Only it is only causing harm in medical and medicine. We take it for granted. Do no harm. What we are doing to these children is harmful, unfair, and detrimental to their overall well-being. For those parents or students who would like to wear masks, one-way masking within that 95 is evidence-based practice and is based in science. And it is the only mask that protects the wearer and the best option at this point. In addition to this point, surgical masks are on foreign improperly. They're used as tissues and shoot devices and they only create another factor for disease propaganda. It's ineffective. We've created, I'm wrapping up. We've, I'm gracious, we've created a false sense of security with universal masking in schools. There's no increased safety happening. A false sense of security harassment, segregation, and distraction from learning. And this will only continue to get worse. Please allow creative choice when it comes to wearing a medical device for six plus hours, five days a week. I graciously thank you.
Nicole Porter. Followed by Gordon Sanderson.
Hello, good evening. I wanted to start by saying thank you for the positive update. I really appreciated that because I feel like positivity is contagious. I think we all need a little bit more of that in our lives. And also smiles are contagious. So that's kind of what I'm here to advocate for. So I feel like this is deja vu, advocating for our children's social, emotional, and academic well-being. Asking you, the adults in charge, to see life from their perspective. Fighting the same science that kept schools closed long past reasonable. Once again, the medical experts are sounding the alarm loud and clear that our kids are not okay, that universal universal masking is pointless but harmful. Cloth masks do little to reduce community transmission, but the consequences are great. Here we are in California, last to help our kids yet again, even though millions of others have already moved on with mask choice and not being raised in a community of shame or fear. All of our neighboring states have dropped school mask mandates, Arizona long ago, recently Nevada and Oregon. The virus is not scarier to schools here than there. I have sent you all numerous articles detailing the significant consequences to keeping our kids masked. The San Francisco Chronicle reported, "Parents are legitimately asking what the benefits are at this stage for policies like masking and whether they outweigh the harms." We have to engage with the science showing that the masks we've been donning for two years don't work all that well. The most rigorous study in adults found that surgical masks reduced infection by about 10% in adults. Dr. Leanna Nguyen called cloth masks facial decoration. There are no approved N95 respirators for kids and no data to justify knockoff varieties. In evidence-based medicine, the burden of proof is on the intervention, not the norm. The norm is seeing human faces. History is being written and you are on the wrong side of the story yet again. Your silence is complicit and will not be looked upon kindly years from now. These kids have not seen another human face on a school campus for two years. They don't know how to recognize a smile or give or read facial clues. They are losing their ability to relate as humans. On February 16th, I went to an appointment, Old Navy, The Gem, and Costco, maskless for hours and breathing the same air as probably thousands of strangers while my kids, who have a smaller risk factor to COVID than they do the seasonal flu, were at school in stable environments amongst their teachers and peers masked for seven hours straight. Is that science? I know you are smart enough to know the answer is no, so please do something about it. Dr. Malloy and Board of Education, please advocate for mask choice immediately and stop unnecessary restrictions that cause more harm than good. I want to know what you will do if the decision is by district and not by county. There needs to be the same urgency to remove mask mandates as there were to reopen schools. The longer we wait, the greater the damage is done to this generation of California children once again.
Thank you, Nicole. Gordon Sanderson. Can you please make your comments, sir?
Hi, my name is Gordon Sanderson. Just a friendly reminder, rules and mandates are not laws. Just following orders is not an excuse. As you may recall, I've sent the board a couple of emails that provided multiple, the highest study of highest level of evidence-based meta-analysis, random control, peer-reviewed studies that clearly demonstrate the lack of efficacy of mask-wearing to prevent infectious disease. I also submitted the same type of studies showing the massive detrimental effects of wearing masks. I also petitioned you as election, as my elected officials, with a petition of grievances. My emails also raised concerns over coercive psychological tactics employed by staff, teachers, and their union. I mentioned federal and civil laws that you are in direct violation of in regards to informed consent where you provide risk and benefit analysis free of coercion. You instead provide us with uninformed consent. I requested that you supply me with your science and your insurance providers. None of you responded. While you are not following the science on masks, you are however, following the psychological science of warfare and coercion. In 1957, Albert Bitterman wrote Bitterman's Principle, which outlines coercion that was done to our prisoners of war during the Korean War by the Chinese and the Koreans. They go as follows. There's eight: isolation, monopolization of perception, humiliation, and degradation, guilt, falsehoods, like if you're not wearing a mask, you're spreading the virus. What does that do to a child? It's a false statement. Exhaustion, threats, occasional indulgences, demonstrating omnipotence, forcing trivial demands. These are also found to be in domestic abusers. Okay? So because you have failed to respond to me, I'm letting you know now that I'm going to send a FOIA request to you and I'm going to demand that you send me your surety bond and my intent to file a claim against all of you. Okay, I don't need a lawyer for that. I'm going to go directly and I'm recommending that everybody here, you think this stops here, it doesn't. They got caught, okay, and they're not backpedaling. They're not following the science and they're not listening and they're abusing our children. Everybody here, I'm sure, has a teacher that's haranguing our children. Okay? That is so wrong. Okay? If anything that I've sent to you is false, go back and read my emails. I'm happy to hear it. Show me your science. You can't. Okay? You're putting it off on somebody. You guys have a circular firing squad and guess what we're all aiming at? Each other. It's coming apart and you need to start responding. Expect my email.
Thank you for your comments. That was our last speaker card. Superintendent, do you want to make some comments before you go over to the board?
Thank you, President Minz. There's just a few comments that I heard that I wrote down. In terms of how it works between CDPH at the state level and at the county level, and happy birthday again, Ronan. It is time for you to go celebrate. He texted to see if it was okay for him to leave. We said it's okay. It's important to note, and you've seen it across our state, that when I presented that it's the state public health and the county public health that need to approve, it's because the county can always create a different situation. They could make a decision that is stricter than the state's. Having said that, we've been given some indication that the county does not plan to do that. I can't speak for them. I can only say that we've been given indication that the county will align with what the state says. But yes, it's true that the state makes a decision. The county can align with it. If the county doesn't align with it, we would still be under a health order. But as I said, we're hoping that the alignment does take place. So that's one question that was asked. It was said that CDPH is leaving this up to districts, that simply as much as maybe some would like is not true. And we have the documentation along those lines as well. The very important question that was asked about the exact stipulations that public health is looking for in order to end the mask mandate, that is what in my presentation, I'm recommending to you that you direct us to write a letter that comes from you because those stipulations, though we've asked, have not been clarified. So I do not have an answer to what those steps need to be. And again, though, appreciating all of our speakers and understanding the perspectives that have been shared and concerned about our students most specifically, the part that I just need to affirm, even if it's disagreed, is as much as you may want to have that authority, you don't. And that can be documented in numerous ways. And when I share that with you, frankly, it's not because I'm trying to ask you to pass the buck. It's because we have the documentation that outlines that. But you do have the ability to advocate for whatever you believe is required, should that be your decision. But my job is to be sure that you understand what the parameters are that we've been given. And the only other comment I've made, because it's come up a couple of times this evening, and as I said, when we talk about insurance companies, we're all part of what's called JPAs. I won't go into the details, but it's a number of school boards that work with a body. And what is difficult, and it's been a part of this pandemic since the beginning, different parts of the state and the different cultures that exist across our state have oftentimes placed into the media that this is going on here or this is going on there. And one of the things that I know has been the topic of a ton of emails this week is, but why is X happening? And even though I read those emails, I share them with you, I promise you that the network of superintendents, we talk to each other all over the state. We actually meet every Thursday at 10:00. And we ask each other these questions and we try to understand what's happening. And yes, a small number of districts, one that said we're not following it and about eight that have said that we're following it, but we're not enforcing it. And that second one, it may seem different, but then when we go back to our insurance providers, it's been made clear that the liabilities the board could face, should we actually do one or two, is high. I'm speaking to you at this point. Excuse me. So where I can go with that is simply to say, I hear the concerns too, as you do. I'm looking forward to this moving forward. I'm hoping that we get the clarity we need. It's got to end. Yes, we've heard about all the sciences, but we're not the experts. But again, as much as it is not agreed by some in our community who are here tonight, it is what I shared with you, literal. You run the risk of not being covered should you make an intentional, is the word that was in the letter, decision not to comply explicitly. That's the language. And I'm not making it up. It's what is written and that's the reason why I provided the recommendation in the way that I did. So I hope that answered some of the questions that were raised by our community members.
Thank you. Before turning to the board, I just want to point out also that board has received a number of public comments to our email. Of those, 20 spoke to mask choice, three to no mask, two to mask choice, and vaccination choice. And vaccination choice goes into the SB 871 that's now being discussed. One opposing SB 871, one continued to follow public health, and two others. So just to give you an idea, and those go to all board members and reviewed up until at least five o'clock, I'd say, if not even later this afternoon. So with that, turn it over to the board for conversation and comments.
I have another question. I'm sorry. So what is, what is the plan if on the 28th, the county changes their guidance and says that the mask mandate is lifted in schools? What is the plan for our school district?
So should you pass this, because you actually have to make that decision? The recommendation would then allow for, one, the state would make their announcement first. We're hearing that. Then we would need to hear from the county. We have to hear from both. Assuming that those align, I would suggest that the next day, should you approve this, masks are by choice.
And that wouldn't need a special meeting. That would be something based on our motion today. And then how, from a school site perspective, how would that be communicated and how would that be, that choice be implemented in the schools in a supportive way?
So like all things, we don't wait until the date. We start the conversations with principals already who will work closely with their staff. We work closely with all of our union colleagues to think through how that process needs to unfold. We've actually been working on with the thought, hope, assumption that something is going to be clarified next week. And that's the reason why we feel confident we could move forward. To be honest, we have moved on a dime about three or four other times through this difficult and challenging two years. Mask choice is probably the easiest of them all.
No, I agree. I just want to make sure that we're looking ahead so we're not having to wait until that guidance changes.
We're also, if I may go one step further, looking at the other very important issue, because we've heard it in our community. It's the judgments that might be made about who's in a mask and who's not. That's a lot more challenging, but it's still part of our commitment to support that healthy, inclusive community we've been talking about. That's also part of our discussions.
I'll just make one point here, and that is that we have already given staff this direction. This item appears on our agenda because the public asked for it. And asked for it not just to be during non-agendized items where we can't discuss it, but that's why we put it on the agenda, because we were asked to do that. But what's being asked by staff is to reconfirm the direction that they've already, we've already given them. And to do so would fall right to that point where those mandates are removed. We would not have to have another meeting at this point. Also, there is no additional language that we would need to work out with our staff about it either. We can make that happen immediately, given the direction already. But again, this reconfirmation is what's being asked for right now by staff.
Can I ask one more?
Oh, please go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just wanted a little bit of clarity on what we would be taking action on. So you had mentioned in your answering to public comment about a letter for clarification? Or I didn't catch what that was about.
So in my comments, and again, this is not part of the recommendation because the the direction we need, I need, is that you give us your clearance to your approval to continue what we've been doing. But I didn't want to take that for granted without us coming back before you. Because for some in our community, not necessarily the voices that we're hearing this evening, this is also a concerning day for them for other reasons. That's why it's important that it's before you today. But to answer your question, because I don't think I answered it, and I'm sorry I got distracted, the next part of what I suggested you consider is if you as a board feel strongly that the type of clarity that we've heard tonight is needed, or frankly, our staff is recommending to you, this lack of clarity regarding what is the process, how will it be determined? When will be told? We're assuming is happening on Monday, but we don't know. And so that recommendation that you, should you choose to direct us to write to our county and state public health leaders with your request, that's a recommendation for you to consider. I didn't put it into the report, but I offer that verbally.
If I can add something to that, I know that personally, I was very, very frustrated and disappointed when the state health official last week made his press conference and really said nothing. Not only did he not say anything, but particularly, he did not purposely provide benchmarks or timelines for his comments. The only thing that came out was the February 28th date. Nothing else. Nothing that said, why February 28th? What we expected to hear on February 28th? What we expected to hear on February 28th, other than that it would address schools at that point. But that's the type of thing that I believe personally, I believe, and I'll talk some more, but what I believe we really need to be advocating for is that, that communication and that information that we should be expecting to hear from those who do have the authority to make these decisions that are leaving us basically holding the bag for our community in a way that we're not in a position to, to directly enforce with, without consequence. And I'll add that part without consequence.
Can I, can I give?
Please, Shelley.
Give you some information about that, because I pulled this up earlier today to kind of clarify for myself what the state is actually, has actually said and what their benchmark is. So Mark Gailey, who is the, the public health officer
Right.
in his news conference said, "The new recommendations will be conditioned on factors such as pediatric COVID-19 related hospitalizations, hospital admissions, test positivity rates, as well as case rates. Today, a change isn't being made, but in two weeks, confirming that the data continues to be where it is. Taking the time to prepare and work with the school community and communities at large, we anticipate making the change." So they're, they're actually looking at the figures that they have from all of those various different sources to decide if they're going to lift the mandate.
But my point is that they probably know benchmarks for what those numbers were. How would we know where they want to be with hospitalizations, for instance, and other things?
If the case rates stay the same, that's what he's saying. If they stay the same as what they are now.
Right, right. Other comments?
Yeah, no, I was, I was frustrated. Actually, I was, you know, when I heard on February 15th that, yeah, that the, everything open except for the schools and, and there's, you know, not any other, as we were saying, benchmarks and that for what happens, right, with our students? Because I, I am very concerned about our students, especially the, the young learners, right? And the special education students and second language learners because of the developmental, right? And then of course, rest of the students, most of them, they're, you know, on their social emotional. I am optimistic from everything I'm hearing that in four days, four school days time, that hopefully the state or county will lift this mask mandate. But I'm going to play devil's advocate and say, okay, I think someone had mentioned an off ramp or something like that. So what happens, you know, if, if state or county decides not to? You know, I think a letter, right? That was one idea. I don't know if there was any other, you know, ways we can advocate and, and really, really, again, I'm, I'm being devil's advocate. Everything I'm hearing is that, you know, the, the higher level authority will lift the, the hopefully mask mandate for schools, for our kids, but you know, I'm just throwing that out there.
The, the one thought, if I can, there seems to be a perspective and a perception that some in their community have shared with us that in instances like this, where the state and or the county hold certain authorities, and I'll speak more about the state because we're closer to the county. We actually meet more with, and we actually have connections to the county. But especially when it's with the state, there's a belief that you and or I have an influence that in the year and a half I've been with you, I haven't experienced, even though I work really hard at providing that influence. It's just not how we're structured. And what you could advocate for, because again, if you pass the motion tonight that we are going to continue the guiding principle we've used since the beginning, and to be very quick and clear, we've used that guiding principle because depending upon what's been on the table throughout the last two years, it's the only way we've been able to navigate these wide views. But then there was one other time in the pandemic where we did not have clarity about physical distancing. We weren't clear about how we were going to navigate. There wasn't any information that was allowing us to start thinking about especially secondary schools for the following year. And so you advocated pretty extensively, as did many other districts, to try to get that clarity. I think part of what is stressful for the superintendents, and we talk about it at our meetings, is most of the protesting is happening in boardrooms across the state. And yet, our question to all of us is, I'm guessing that if every boardroom that has had the voices we've heard tonight, because there's a thousand in the state, and we talked about this last week, would have everybody speak to the people who are making the decision in the same way with their physical presence? How we know that those state meetings don't actually allow the same kind of physical presence? There might be a different result. But to answer your question, if you pass this motion, there is no reason to shift it if you still are understanding and accepting some of the other parameters that I've shared tonight, short of deciding how you want to advocate.
Okay, I have to stop for a point of order. It's approaching 10 o'clock. Our meeting officially ends at 10 o'clock, unless we take unanimous action to extend the meeting. We have a lot more meeting to go tonight. I do not want to cut this item short, however. So I'm going to ask for a motion that we extend until 11:30.
Move approval.
Extend till 11:30.
Second. The motion was made by board member Clark and seconded by board member Ordway. Roll call votes. Board member Ordway?
Aye.
Board member Clark?
Aye.
Board member Brad?
Aye.
Board member Heard?
Aye.
Board member Mince?
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Shelley, I think you were speaking.
So I prepared some remarks tonight, because I want to make sure that I get all my thoughts out. And it's a stressful situation. Sometimes I don't always do that. I have really, really struggled with this, because at this point in the pandemic, I would like to see choice whether to wear a mask in school or not. So I understand your perspective and opinions, and I may even agree with them. There's four school days, so the state issues their next mandate. And as a school board member, of course, students are my most important, the most important people in my job. But as a school board member, whether you agree with it or not, I'm bound by law to uphold the mandate. And I have to look at the big picture and take into consideration the perspectives of all stakeholders who may not feel the same way you do, and the consequences that could very well arise from defying a state mandate. Because there's other ways that our students can be hurt if we're penalized. So we have to be, we have to take that into consideration also. That being said, I agree that the masking needs to, needs to not continue. And we can either do it the easy way or the hard way. So what, what I want to do is I want to wait and see what the, the state is going to say on Monday. And if we don't, if they don't, we need to hold them their feet to the fire as far as what they said to us, how they're going to measure and decide whether the mandate is going to go on or not. And so in our letter of advocacy for the district, I would want to include something to get clarity around, are you depending on, if these are the things you're depending on, then you need to show us the figures and the justification around what you're doing. And if they lift the mandate on Monday, I would want that to go into immediate effect for all students in this school district the next day. Not to have another meeting, not to do anything else. I, I hear you. I know that our students are suffering from this over this long period of time. And it's time for us to be able to stand up for them and to take into consideration also all the other people who may not feel safe having masks taken off. So we're, we're here for you. We hear you. And we're doing the best we can to try to protect the kids, not only from COVID or, but the liability that we may face, because some people have said that all we care about is money. Well, you better hope that we care about finances and money, because any money that we lose or dollars that we lose because we didn't, didn't act in accordance with the law is a loss to our students in ways that we can't take care of them, because we don't have the funding that we need. So we have to consider all those things when we make these decisions.
Thank you, Shelley. That was, that was really well said, and I appreciate your statement. And I, I agree. I agree with everything that you said. I, I, I have four kids in the school district. I say that sometimes to remind people that I stand in the shoes of many of you that are sitting in front of me. And I believe that, that that masks have been detrimental. I also believe that there's a value, that there has been a value in them based on the experts in public health. So I, all along, since I have sat at this desk, I have felt that the principle of following the guidance from the experts is a north star that has allowed us as a district to move in a way that's been fast and effective. And we haven't had to have debate and conversation around things and make things political. And so I strongly believe that we need to continue our guiding principle of following the guidance and directives of our county and state. I also want to take the opportunity to say that I think that we do, I, I would, I would be on board definitely with, with having a letter that, that asks for more, more information and clarity around how that February 28th decision, I guess, if that's what we can call it, will be made. I also would like for us to look at if on the 28th, masks are not lifted in schools, what will we do at that point? Will we then pen a letter that advocates for the lifting of masks? Will we continue to follow the guidance? Well, you know, and I don't know if that's a conversation we need to have right now. If we, if we need to think about then maybe having a workshop around that or another meeting that next day or, or what?
If I can offer something just from a superintendent's point of view, and then I want to get out of the discussion is, we don't ever want to do anything that is unhealthy. And we've said we're not the experts. However, the part that we can say is this whole situation that's been set up is untenable.
Yes.
We, we can't keep doing this. We spent at least the first hour of our meeting talking about what our kids need, learning, mental health and such. We can't keep doing this. So I would hope that we didn't necessarily, it's up to you if you want to have another meeting. We could always have another meeting, or you could tonight direct what step one, step two are as well. That, that's your call, which means tomorrow you should send the following letter that asks for the following things. And if things don't go as planned on Monday, we would ask you to follow up in the, with the following things. The way we work is with the president, based upon the board's direction. That's just a suggestion, though, President Mince.
I think we could maybe even be more proactive than that with regard to the letter. I think we could write a letter.
I agree.
We are concerned about the impact on our kids mentally and socially emotionally of wearing masks. We are looking to you, state of California and county health, state and county health, to tell us what are the measures and what thresholds do we need? But please keep in mind, we are concerned about this. Because I think everyone in the community, even if you're fearful about getting COVID or bringing it home, recognizes that we're tired of wearing these. We all are. I know some of you may be looking at us, why are we wearing them? Part of it is we feel like if we're making the kids wear them, we need to keep doing it too. So I, I just feel like I need to explain that. Excuse me?
No, go ahead.
Just telling you why I am wearing a mask. Okay, so anyway, I think being proactive right from the front of our motivation of why we're pushing and, and why we want the clarity. But, but looking towards the science. We've heard at the microphone for months about science. And there's multiple versions of science, just by listening to the folks in the room. And I'm not calling anybody a liar. I'm not calling anybody an idiot. I'm just saying that it's really difficult when everyone talks about the science, like they're the authority on the science. And so that's why, like Laura, like Shelley, like Susannah already said, I have appreciated this North Star that you've provided for us, because it's really difficult in the middle of the differing opinions. Someone asked, where are the other people? They're not here because they're afraid to come in here. Well, that's what they write to us. That's what they say to us.
They're, they're, no, they're not afraid of, they're not afraid of COVID necessarily. They're afraid of being, they're afraid of being, I, I sit here and I'm heckled, so I know what that feeling is. I chose to be here. Others in our community feel silenced, and, and that's just a fact, and, and it's something that when...
But I think what we can all agree, none of this is good for any of us, right? What, what, what we are doing to ourselves as a community is not healthy. And so I think the point of the letter needs to be for all of us, but particularly our children. We need to be able to move on and return to a sense of normalcy. As soon as it's safe, please tell us when it's safe, but push them on it. And John, I know you have been pushing them, but I think if it's coming from us, we can say we had a room full of concerned citizens who spoke. And I would like to say very eloquently, I was very with most of the speeches, I could kind of do without the threatening, but most of you were really sincere and really relate. And I know you're here for your kids, and I truly respect that. And I hope that you can respect that, that, that we respect that. So is that, is it too early for a motion? Can I?
Yeah, just.
Okay, let, let us talk before we make a motion.
Do the rest of you all have had the opportunity, excuse me. We've had the opportunity for public comment, and now the board is in consideration. And as far as heckling goes, I'm sorry, as board member speaking, she's being heckled by some of you. And you're, as you're saying, oh, we don't heckle people, that people would be afraid to come in. No, they are afraid to come in and afraid of being pointed out. I'll be honest, right now, I'm not wearing a mask for the kids today. I'm wearing a mask for my own personal reasons. And that's important to me. I was in Costco today. I didn't wear a mask, well, I didn't wear a mask going in until I noticed that the vast, vast majority of people in Costco were wearing masks. And I felt comfortable, well, I should put on a mask. But today, I'm in a room where previous meetings, I would have started the meeting by asking you to all be wearing a mask. And if you're unvaccinated, you really shouldn't even be in here. Today's meeting, because the law has changed, I didn't ask that. I have no idea if all of you are vaccinated, or if all of you who have been vaccinated have boosted. What I do know is that our kids aren't vaccinated at the same level that adults are in this area. And I also understand that there are families that are just as, as concerned for their children of what happens next. I'm wearing a mask. I'm concerned, how many of you did in fact look at the board and say, oh, the five board members, they're all wearing masks? They don't care about us. They're just doing it politically. I'll, I'll, I'll share. My, my daughter is expecting any moment now. If I want to get anywhere near a grandkid, she told me I better be wearing this mask. If I'm in enclosed room for what's now starting at 5:30 in our closed session, in a closed room with people not wearing masks, not knowing who's vaccinated or not, that's my reason. My question to all of you, because my hope is that yes, the choice will come very, very soon. My question to all of you is, how supportive are you going to be for people like me? People like, people like my significant other who is, has some immune issues? People like a friend of mine that I just got a text message, died of COVID this evening. How many of you are going to be recognizing that this is not over? What we've really moved is to the next stage. And hopefully this next stage is moving us more towards normalcy. But I digress. To me, I'm not a health expert. Apparently, a number of you have done a lot of research, and I appreciate you taking the time and concern for your families. I am not a health expert. I need to depend upon those people who have been put in leadership roles, appointed, elected, doesn't matter. They are supposed to be protecting us with, excuse me. They are given the responsibility. They are given the responsibility of protecting us. They may differ from what someone else is doing somewhere else. Of all of the school districts that people have mentioned having taken action, none of them are in this county. Um, I, I was just up in Roseville. It's different in Roseville. Rockland right next door, Lincoln right next door, haven't taken the same action that Roseville has taken, right next door adjacent communities. All I'm saying is, I am supportive of following the law. In this case, the law is a mandate. If you don't like the law, have it changed. It's not going to be changing here in the school board room. It's going to be changed at the county level. It's going to be changed at the state level. The CDC is a guidance, a guidance for those health officials. If you don't like what they're doing, that's where you should be directing your attention. For us, my hope is that you're going to be supportive of your kids, no matter what it takes. And part of that is what happens when the kid sitting next to him in school next week wants to or needs to wear a mask? How is your kid going to be supportive of their choice? Just as I'm asking you to be supportive of my choice right here, right now, to wear this mask. Because when I step out of this room, I'm taking a mask off, and I'm going to feel okay about that. And since I go to my daughter's house, I better have this mask back on again, and I will. So, no, no, I'm sorry, there's no more response on this matter. There is, no, 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 I did not. I'm making, I'm making, I'm making a comment. With that, board members, are you ready to take an action? Rachel, do you want to?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to continue abiding by the mandate with the caveat that we send a letter to the county and the state advocating for more clarity and advocating for, what else did you put on there?
I think starting with the idea that we, that we
That we're concerned.
Start taking a toll on, on student learning.
Yeah.
The motion can just say, a letter that reflects all of the advocacy that you asked for this evening because we've all been taking notes. And we will be sure that you all see it before it goes out, and we will be sure that all of your names are on it. Uh, so that we've, we've captured what you've spoken about tonight. That could be the, the motion.
Is that, okay.
Yes.
And the second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further comment in that case?
The motion was made by Board Member Clark and seconded by Board Member Brat. Roll call vote. Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Clark.
Aye.
Board Member Brat.
Aye.
Board Member Hurd.
Aye.
Board Member Mintz.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. And I do want to thank you all for attending and providing input on this very important matter for our kids. Item ten point two is a public hearing redistricting review of proposed maps and consideration adoption of resolution number sixty-two twenty-one dash twenty-two approving adjustments to the boundaries of the district's trustee areas pursuant to education code five oh one nine point five. Danny?
Okay. Haven't cleared a room like this in years. Just kidding. Okay. I know, it's, it's just, okay, uh, this is the, uh, third, uh, hearing or second public hearing, third public hearing. Uh, we had two dates, uh, one January eighteenth and the second February eighth. And we bring this item back to you today again, uh, for your review and for your action this evening. That's the difference between tonight and the other two nights. Um, so, uh, just to go through the item very quickly, because we've seen this before. Um, per education code section five zero one nine point five, upon the release of U.S. Decennial Census Data School Districts that use a bi-trusty area elections are required to evaluate whether their current trustee areas have approximately equal population using the new census data. As a general rule, the variation in total population among trustee, ten percent. If the total peak variation exceeds ten percent, trustee area boundaries need to be adjusted. This process is referred to as redistricting. National Demographics Corporation is a demographic can, term experienced in redistricting issues and the necessary requirements. We retained in D.C. to provide their analysis regarding the current demographic population in the district based upon the official twenty twenty census results. After evaluating that data, NDC determined that the board's total peak variation between trustee, trustee areas exceeds ten percent, and the board therefore is required to make adjustments to its current boundaries. Uh, first on January eighteenth, and then again on February eighth of this year, NDC presented information to the board regarding redistricting process, their analysis of the current demographic population in the district, and a potential. The board then conducted public hearings to gather and receive input from the community related to trustee area boundary map revisions. Tonight, we will again look at that, uh, presentation one more time, as well as the potential map option. Uh, the board will then be asked to conduct a public hearing to gather input and present trustee areas of the district and the population changes in the district as set forth in the, in D.C.'s study. The board will then review the proposed map and consider adopting resolution six two, uh, slash twenty-one, twenty-two approving the adjustments to the district's trustee areas pursuant to education code five zero one nine point five. At this point, I'm going to turn it over. We have the presentation up on the screen, and Doug Johnson has joined us, um, once again from NDC. Hello, Doug.
Good evening, and, uh, and I'll go through this quickly, as, as you just mentioned, uh, you've seen this material before, and I know it's been a long night. So, uh, let's go ahead and jump in with the next slide, please. So just as a reminder, we have the federal laws that we have to follow, which the biggest one being equal population. Then, of course, compliance of the Federal Voting Rights Act while avoiding any racial gary-mandering. Those are the statutory requirements, and then we have our traditional principles that are the set of general goals that, uh, are not requirements, but they are traditional goals and how these lines are drawn. The next slide, please. As I just mentioned, uh, we did look at the current trustee areas and, uh, trustee area two, as you see by the numbers here, is short by just over nine percent, and it's the smallest trustee area in terms of population. And then trustee area three has grown the most. It's, uh, twelve, a little more than twelve percent over the target population. Um, so that gives us our twenty-one and a half percent deviation that needs to be less than ten. Uh, areas four and five are, are quite close to balance, so we're not worried about them. And then area one is almost six percent short, but we can get within that ten percent range or allow between the largest and smallest without changing that. So, go, next slide. Um, you have seen, there are tons of demographics that we've generated for all these trustee areas of, I'm not going to go through them tonight, but I'm happy to come back to them if there are questions about them. Uh, so let's go to the next slide. So the only change needed is the area, um, shown with the arrow here in the middle, kind of the, the north piece of, of trustee area three um, can come out. And if that area is transferred to area two, it both balances our populations and brings the overall map into the required range. And it creates a Doherty Valley only, uh, trustee area. So area three would be the Doherty Valley, um, just by itself, instead of the Doherty Valley, which needed additional population last time to get to that number. So it makes sense both from a population balance change and from a community of interest change. So that's our proposed change. Uh, I believe the next slide is the same demographics. Yes, we have full demographics for that map. That I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them about that. And let's go to the next slide. So that's the presentation. Um, if you have any questions about the details of any of the maps or any of the demographics, I'm happy to go into detail about them.
Thank you. Um, board members, this is our third public hearing. Are there any questions for clarification of the demographer or staff? Not at this time. Uh, I do not have any speaker cards for open a public hearing. Any speaker cards that I've missed? None. Closed public hearing. Um, it's not listed, but this is an action item for the board. So, board members, any additional questions, comments before taking an action? Adopting the resolution of the proposed map, um, that was presented to us.
I have one clarifying question. So we have received no community input asking for alternative maps or anything like that, right? Except for when the originator of this whole process was not happy that we were sticking so close to what we had done before.
That is correct.
Right? Anybody else have anything?
No, I'm, I think the proposed map actually look, I mean.
It improves things.
Yes, yes, a little better than actually the one before.
And as we've talked about before, having those two district areas be the ones that make the adjustment actually works well for our community and as voters as well, not losing an opportunity to, uh, vote in their term.
Could we put the map back up? There's just a comment I want to make that was kind of a guiding principle in the first go around.
Yeah.
The, the proposed change. I mean, it, the, the chunk is obvious that it's going into the blue. Our original idea was that we did not want trustees beholden to one high school community. And so I think we still honor that in that every trustee area does include constituents in the attendance area of at least two high schools. Is that still accurate? I think it is. Yeah, that little part right there. So, so three does, and two includes Simona Vista and some San Ramon. Yeah. I don't think Cal is a supporter. Pro Canyon. We shouldn't be guessing. We should ask the experts.
Yes.
Yeah, thanks, Danny.
Sorry, I, I slowed the uptake there. Yes, uh, it, you still are serving, not, you're not in a feeder pattern, if that's what you were trying to avoid, you, you are not in a feeder.
Right, and the intent there, for anyone in the audience, is like, what, what are they talking about? It was that we didn't want to be creating, while the intent is communities of interest, we want our Board of Education to represent San Ramon Valley Unified School District and be advocating and concerned with the needs of all of our students, not just a particular attendance area. And that was our intent when, when we did that a few years ago. So that was just, I just wanted to clarify that that was still the case. I'm happy to move, make the motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
The motion was made by Board Member Hurd and seconded by Board Member Ordway. Call out vote. Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Clark.
Aye.
Board Member Brat.
Aye.
Board Member Hurd.
Aye.
Board Member Mintz.
Aye.
The motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Item ten point three, public disclosure of the major provisions of the twenty twenty, twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two Service Employees International Union Local ten twenty-one, SEIU. Agreement in accordance with the requirements of AB twelve hundred, AB twenty-seven fifty-six and Government Code thirty-five forty-seven. And again, Mr. Hillman.
Thank you. Lots of compliance in this item here. Um, Assembly Bill twelve hundred, AB twenty-seven fifty-six require local educational ag- agencies to publicly disclose the major provisions of all collective bargaining agreements before entering into a written agreement. Government Code Section thirty-five forty-seven point five states before a public school employer enters into a written agreement with an exclusive representative covering matters within the scope of representation. The major provisions of the agreement, including but not limited to the costs that would be incurred by the public school employer under the agreement for the current and subsequent fiscal years, shall be disclosed at a public meeting of the public school employer in a format established for this purpose by the Superintendent of Public Instruction. This provision is intended to ensure that the public is aware of the known costs associated with a proposed collective bargaining agreement before it becomes binding upon the district. In addition, the law requires that a district superintendent and chief business officer, CBO, certify in writing that the costs incurred under a collective bargaining agreement can be met by the district during the term of the agreement. The public disclosure form, along with a copy of the proposed bargaining agreement, must be submitted to the County Office of Education for at least ten workdays prior to the date on which the governing board will take action on the proposed collective bargaining agreement. The County Office of Education has reviewed the district's disclosure documents and performed their review. They are in agreement with the district's certification that it can afford the salary settlement with the previously identified assumptions and budget staffing FTE adjustments that were recommended as part of the first interim report presented at the December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one board meeting. The district has reached a tentative agreement with SEIU, and in accordance with requirements of AB twelve hundred, staff has prepared the AB twelve hundred public disclosure documents along with certification that the district can meet the costs incurred during the term of the agreement. There are, there is no recommendation on this particular item. This is a public disclosure item only. You'll hear about the details of the item in just a minute from, um, a colleague of mine. The budget implications for this item would be an ongoing salary increase of one percent effective July one, twenty twenty, an ongoing salary increase of three percent effective July one, twenty twenty-one, and a one-time payment of one percent based on the salary placement as of November first, twenty twenty-one. Total budget impact of eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars in the current year, twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, attached to this item, you will see the letter dated February tenth from the, um, uh, Denise Porterfield, the deputy superintendent of the county, certifying that they agree with our analysis. And then there's a few pages after that that is the worksheet that we fill out, that is the compliance document that the uses to, um, fulfill this requirement for AB twelve hundred.
Very good. Thank you. So that was a public disclosure. There's no action on that. Was there any public comment on the disclosure?
There was not.
Seeing none, we'll then move on to item ten point four, which is consideration of approval of a tentative agreement between the San Ramon Valley Unified School District and the Service Employees International Union, SEIU Local ten twenty-one for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two annual reopeners and a twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two successor contract. Melanie?
Thank you, President Mintz. Uh, the proposed tentative agreement presented to you this evening is the result of the collective bargaining process between the district and SEIU. This employs international union, local ten twenty-one for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two annual reopeners and a three-year successor agreement from twenty-one through twenty twenty successor contract. I would like to add that the district and SEIU, um, began the sunshine process at the November Board of Education regular meeting. Um, we began the bargaining process, um, in December and engaged in, uh, held five, uh, bargaining sessions with SEIU, which we accomplished quite a bit of work together. I would like to add that we're very proud to be presenting this, um, tentative agreement to you this evening. Uh, SEIU was able to ratify this tentative agreement with a ninety-seven percent approval rate from their membership. I would also like to take the opportunity to recognize and appreciate, uh, the SEIU leadership, um, recognize their outstanding leadership and commitment to a collaborative and a healthy um, bargaining process as all. Um, I specifically would like to identify and recognize Kerry Lupini, Raman Opiani, Ron Saxer, Marva Lockwood, and Jeremy Harringer. Also, SEIU field rep Angela Thomas for their commitment and dedication to this collaborative process, as well as the members of the district teams, Craig Sesko, John Hillman, Jason Flores, Latonya Williams, and Keith Roginsky, for once again for their time and commitment in engaging with this collaborative process as well. Uh, the cost of the agreement is required by AB twelve hundred, AB twenty-seven fifty-six was presented earlier in this uh, uh, evening's agenda. So we are asking the board trustees to, uh, consider and approve this recommendation as written.
Thank you, Melanie. Uh, any questions or comments from board members? If not, uh, let me just say thank you again to both the management and the SEIU bargaining teams for their work and coming to a collaborative agreement. With that, have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
The motion was made by Board Member Brat and seconded by Board Member Ordway. Roll call vote. Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Clark.
Aye.
Board Member Brat.
Aye.
Board Member Hurd.
Aye.
Board Member Mintz.
Aye.
The motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Item ten point five is consideration of acceptance of the twenty twenty-one Parcel Tax Oversight Committee Report. Did I miss something? Okay. Danny, do you want to introduce this? Thank you.
Okay, um, so item ten point five, um, this is the annual parcel tax committee report. Um, Shelley sits on our, um, on the Parcel Tax Oversight Committee as the trustee representative. And tonight we have, um, a gentleman here from our Parcel Tax Oversight Committee. I'm going to let him introduce himself and give you the presentation that the committee helped compile to discuss with you their review and findings of the parcel tax.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Can you hear me? Hi, my name is Scott Ryder. I'm the chair of the Parcel Tax Oversight Committee. I want to first of all thank the my fellow committee members for the work during the year reviewing. Shelley, your help as well. And Dan and Sandra as well for all the help you provided for us. I'm. The presentation, will the presentation be?
It's in the packet. We could always pull the packet up. And show that, the the board agenda, if that's easier to find for you. Sorry, Scott. It's page eighty three.
Do we need a five-minute break? You guys doing okay? Everyone all right? Okay.
Do you have the all the way at the bottom?
Try page eighty three.
Okay.
It might be page eighty four. You might have to, you you can flip it, then it'll be legible, readable. There you go.
There.
Okay.
I can just scroll down. Okay, thank you. I'm, this is my third time having the privilege of presenting this to you, which means the presentation is remarkably similar to the prior year with a few specific updates that have been included. In the spirit of how long things have gone and it's past my bedtime, I'm going to go through it as quickly as possible and of course answer any questions that you have. I'm going to skip a fair, a few of the slides and not go through all twelve of them. I'm. So we've been fortunate enough to have a parcel tax since two thousand eight. I, let's see. I believe the current one expires in twenty twenty four and this year generated six point nine million dollars in support for our schools. As approved by the voters, it's to be used for direct academic activities and not for administrative purposes. The Parcel Tax Oversight Committee, our job was to review and ensure that the funds that were received under the parcel tax were used in accordance with the voter-approved intended purposes. What I'd like to point out on this slide is merely one thing, which is that second bullet up there. Through our review and through Dan's help, we were able to identify that the parcel tax was able to support fifty nine and a half FTEs, full-time equivalents for the school. That's down a little bit from last year when we were at, I believe about sixty one. But it's still was in, in support of the approved measure. In conclusion, the committee did approve and agree that we believe that the funds had been used as they were intended and what was approved by the voters. And that's again.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Appreciate your concise presentation. Now, I I I just want to say that, you know, while it was succinct, we really, as a board, I'd say truly appreciate the work of the Parcel Tax Oversight Committee. This is something that was not required by state law, that we put this oversight into play as it would be with the facilities oversight. However, we felt it was at the time really important that we were able to demonstrate to the community funds were being used as, as promoted and that it has made a significant difference for our school district. And that's why these reports each year are so important to make it clear that we continue to appreciate the support that we're receiving from the community. And again, the thanks to the Parcel Tax Oversight Committee for its work in helping to acknowledge that. Board members, any comments or questions that anyone has?
I just want to say thank you for sitting here all evening, listening to everything before you gave your report. And I always appreciate the work that everyone does that's on this committee. They're they're very dedicated and serious and took it seriously and it shows. So thanks so much.
And Shelley, thank you so much for acting as liaison to this committee, if you wouldn't mind making a motion in terms of accepting the report.
Make a motion to accept the PTOC's report this evening.
I'll second. The motion was made by Board Member Clark and seconded by Board Member Heard. Call out vote, Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Clark.
Aye.
Board Member Brat.
Aye.
Board Member Heard.
Aye.
Board Member Mince.
Aye.
The motion passes five zero.
Again, Scott, thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you as well.
And please pass along our thanks to the rest of the committee next time you see them.
Will do. Thank you.
Moving on to item ten point six, consideration of adoption of Resolution number sixty three slash twenty one twenty two resolution to decrease the number of classified employees due to a lack of work and or lack of funds. Melanie.
Thank you. Under education code, the district may provide notice of layoff to a classified employee due to lack of work or lack of funds. Certain classified employees who are currently employed will be impacted by layoff implementing this resolution. Resolution number sixty three, twenty one dash twenty two identifies the specific impact to implement the needed staffing reduction in classified services. The district and CSEA have negotiated and tentatively agreed to the reductions of hours for certain positions and the ratification of this agreement is in process. I would like staffing adjustments for the upcoming school year are based overwhelmingly upon services that are paid by external funding sources, primarily ed fund, PTA, and boosters, for example. This year's process and timeline shifted much earlier due to the new legislation under AB four thirty eight, which requires initial noticing of layoff, layoff of hours in positions to affected employees by March fifteenth and final notice of layoff by May fifteenth. I'd like the board to keep in mind that while you are, would be approving the reduction of positions identified in this resolution, the notices that are issued to employees before March fifteenth may or may not be final. In the event that the external funding sources determine that they do have the financial ability to support these positions for next year, rescission notices can and will be issued. In terms of budget implications, upon full implementation, this action will reduce general fund expenditures on classified services by approximately two hundred thousand dollars per year and to the general fund and then approximately three hundred and sixty thousand dollars per year for categorical categorical and external funding expenditures. I would ask the board to consider this resolution as written.
Board members, any questions or comments?
I have a comment. I want to, I want to thank not only the district, right, and CSEA for the resolution, but actually all the work from our partners like the PTA and the Ed Funds and the Booster. Because I know it was a challenge to actually move the date so much earlier usually. And not only with the date change, but as someone who used to get these layoff notices, I also want to acknowledge our classified employees that might be receiving this. And I'm hoping that, as you said, it's a Melanie that's not final yet. So I'm hoping that, you know, by the, before the next school year, that perhaps some of these positions will be reinstated if we can find the funds, which I I know. We're all, we're all trying to to do that in our part, so.
Thank you, Trustee Ordway.
Anyone else? I I I just want to second that. I think, once again, the state has shown us kind of a curve ball in terms of moving up items and everyone having to make some adjustment in order to concur with the the state's requirements. And I think everyone did a tremendous job in doing it. And I think as Tammy, I think, mentioned earlier, it was good to see how everyone did step up and how this is not affecting us the way we were initially concerned that it would. And hopefully, we'll see even better numbers come forward after this. If there are no other comments, questions, can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. The motion was made by Board Member Brat and seconded by Board Member Clark. Call out that Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Clark.
Aye.
Board Member Brat.
Aye.
Board Member Heard.
Aye.
Board Member Mince.
Aye.
The motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Item ten point seven is consideration of adoption of Resolution number sixty six slash twenty one twenty two. Establishment of criteria for the order of layoff and reemployment following layoff of employees with the same first date of paid service in probationary position. Melanie, it's yours again.
Thank you. So in decreasing the number of classified employees due to lack of work and or lack of funds addressed in Resolution sixty three, twenty one dash twenty two, there may need to be, there may need to apply specific criteria to determine the order of termination and reemployment following layoff of employees with the same first date of paid service in a probationary position. Resolution sixty six, twenty one dash twenty two defines the specific criteria to be applied in such instances. The district and CSEA have negotiated and tentatively agreed to the criteria included in this resolution and the ratification of that agreement is in process. More specifically, this resolution before you describes how the district and CSEA have agreed to handle the layoff of two or more employees in a classification that is being reduced when they have the exact same date of hire. As you'll see, we've agreed to use total years of service employed in the district as a primary tiebreaker first. And if that doesn't break the tie, we conduct a lottery to break the tie. This is a very common pro- process in both certificated and classified tie-breaking criteria in a layoff process.
Good. Board members, questions or comments? If not, have a motion.
I'll move approval.
Second. I'm sorry, who seconded? Lauren? Susanna. The motion was made by Board Member Heard and seconded by Board Member Ordway. Call up Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Clark.
Aye.
Board Member Brat.
Aye.
Board Member Heard.
Aye.
Board Member Mince.
Aye.
The motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Item ten point eight, consideration of adoption of Resolution number sixty four slash twenty one twenty two. Approval of provisional internship permit requests. Once more, Melanie.
Thank you. My last item this evening, this is an item that I believe that you've been seeing on every board agenda this school year at least. So I'm going to make it brief, but I just wanted to remind you that the California Commission on Teacher, teacher credentialing is no longer issuing emergency permits. Instead, the commission replaced the emergency permit with a with a PIP, which is a provisional internship permit, which gives applicants additional time to meet the subject matter competence required, requirement needed to enter an internship program. A school district may request a PIP only after a diligent search has been conducted and a fully credentialed teacher was unable to be hired in a position. As you will see, we're making a request to have the board approve a PIP for it to come, to fulfill a PE position at California High School with the named individual.
Questions or comments?
I'll move the motion.
Second. The motion was made by Board Member Ordway and seconded by Board Member Clark. Roll call vote, Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Clark.
Aye.
Board Member Brat.
Aye.
Board Member Heard.
Aye.
Board Member Mince.
Aye.
The motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Item ten point nine, consideration of acceptance of the Access to Excellence Campaign.
Thank you, President Mince. I will begin and thanks to Dan Riley, Ken Madsen for being here from RDA, the public relations firm we've been working with till the end of the night. You at least got to experience us in our full life. And I know I'm going to invite Terry Kaney, who we all know, to the podium as well. And I know, Ken, you're going to assist us. Though this is late in the evening and we'll try to be brief, I still think it's very important. We all know what the access to excellence process has been. We've been working with RDA regarding a campaign. The purpose of the campaign we'll discuss through this PowerPoint presentation, but in essence, it's to engage widely and broadly, to celebrate successes, to name some of our challenges. And our hopeful outcome is that at the end of the process, we've actually been able to unite our community around the importance of our schools to the community. So I'm going to just leave the introduction at that. And Terry, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Malloy. Good evening, board members. It's great to see you all again. I'm excited to be part of the Access to Excellence Campaign. We're really calling it a campaign. And and I think in a lot of ways, that's very purposeful. It's it's your, as you're going to see, it's a relatively short window, but we really truly believe that the the strategies, the deliverables that we have and put in place are going to, are going to have long-term benefits for our school district. So we're going to just briefly, I know you have a hard stop at eleven thirty, so we're just going to go through this real quick to give you a glimpse into kind of what the plan is going forward and then hopefully you'll adopt our proposed budget. So this is what we want to brief you about today, the the purpose of the campaign, the objectives. We believe that 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 there are ways for us to move the needle and 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 actually measure success. We're going to talk about like any good communications plan. You identify your target audiences, you identify the messaging that you think will resonate with those target audiences. And then you identify what are the communication preferences or delivery channels that you think are going to really help to engage those folks. Description of campaign deliverables that that Ken is going to talk to you about a little bit. And some of these you'll find are a little bit out of the box for us, but we think that the last two years have been indescribable, right? None of us have ever experienced this. We we think that that some of these things are really going to 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 move that needle and to really start to reengage our community. And we're excited about presenting those to you tonight. And then finally, we'll talk to you a little bit about the timeline and schedule going forward between April, between now actually, and the end of May and then into June and July. And then we'll give you a glimpse into what the campaign budget will involve. So the purpose of this really is to, as Dr. Malloy said, it's to engage our community. We believe that this campaign itself, while it has a relatively short window, that most of the strategies that we're identifying will continue long beyond the campaign window. Our mantra for this is going to be leverage and repurpose, right? We are really going to try to identify what the low-lying fruit is so so that we can utilize the already existing delivery channels that the district has access to. Email, school messenger, thought exchange, our website, our social media platforms. Those are all no-to-low-cost items that we'll be able to use and leverage. And we want to make sure that we use those things and we repurpose them in ways that are going to allow us to overlap audiences to sustain over time. So really leverage and repurpose is really kind of our two main mantras for this, for this campaign. And before I turn it over to Ken, we really do think that we can move the needle and that there are some ways for us to actually measure this. We'll be looking at increased traffic to and engagement in the district website, our YouTube channel, other social media platforms. We we believe this is going to lead to an increase in community partnership opportunities, which is also a very tangible result. And now, when I turn it over to Ken, I just want to just briefly introduce Ken and Dan. So Dan Riley is with us from Riley Design Associates. He and Ken Madsen are the principals. You may recall when we went through, if you recall, the Coalition for Youth Safety and Development. One of the strategies we identified One of the strategies we identified was our hero campaign and it stood for here, everyone reaches out. We put together a very pointed Poster campaign that we blanketed the community with. We did two full day photo shoots. And when we asked our professionals here, is this something that you think you could get behind? They said absolutely. And they were so instrumental in making that happen and it's largely because they have kids in our schools, they had kids in our schools. They believe in our school district and they believe what kind of this process is about too. So With that, I'm gonna turn it over to to Ken, who's gonna talk about audiences and deliverables.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Ken Madsen. I'm one of the principals at Riley Design Associates. I thought it'd be helpful to give you a little background why we're so passionate about this. So the agency is celebrating its thirty seventh year in business. We've been out in San Ramon for twenty years. Not only that, we've lived here in the East Bay. My wife and I are perpetual home buyers. We've been five homes in the Danville and San Ramon area. And what was interested in when we came to learning about this opportunity, Becky and I made all those decisions of those homes to keep our son Aaron in the Unified School District. And it was amazing. And then I heard earlier when we were here tonight that you celebrated Ms. Glass, Cheryl Glass. Our son went to San Ramon High School and was in that band. And he met his wife there. And now we have a two and a half year old granddaughter. So this is very important to us on what that means about what we're calling sustained Success and how you do that. And that's what we think this campaign will do. It will get people energized and motivated to continue this kind of sustained excellence within our community. And we're still here and love it. So one thing that we're doing in the campaign is it's complex because you have different audiences. I just shared a few with you. We have students and you communicate with them with different medias and different approaches. We have what Becky and I were parents with children That now we're empty nesters, but we're still here and we're residents and we see what the value is of having great school districts And great environments that our homes are valued, our teachers are valued. So what we've done and what you see on that slide is that All of these audiences, we've already done the research to say, how do you communicate to them? What kind of vehicles will we use and how would we look like a visual? So those are the audiences that we have. I'm gonna, again, we are getting very late and so we're showing you one example. So we went out and reached out and had five questions for each of these audiences. So here's an example for the students and I'll let you look at these, but we're not gonna go through them. It's what is the benefit for you as a student when you hear about sustained education and sustained success? What's that mean to you? And so they provided us this information. So that's the first question. The second one was what messages resonate with you as a student? So think about that, or if you're a homeowner, or if you're a business person In our district. What are what what messages resonate with you? So we've done that. Then there are barriers. There's always going to be challenges. And so we want to make sure when we're doing this campaign and we're doing this outreach, we want to understand what some of those issues might be. So you're proactively addressing those and getting them on board because our whole thing is about communications and engagement. The next one is access, what ways can we communicate to the business people in our community? To our homeowners, to our caregivers, to our staff? How do we communicate to them? So we're deciding those ways. An interesting thing is Facebook used to be pretty powerful, right? Now for students, it's Instagram, Twitter, TikTok. Facebook has kind of been ours now. So you understand that and you know how to communicate. And then the other one is what are we asking for? And what we really want for all those audiences is to engage, understand the value In the sustained excellence and get them to help us on this journey, including you and the staff that's on the community. The deliverables, what we've done is we'll create a campaign visual brand. What would resonate with all of these audiences? It's not individuals, it's just for the entire campaign. You'll see that we talk about social media videos. We have distribution tools like Print materials and videos. Something that we've been very successful recently is what they call geo fencing ads. Where we define that profile. So you have Ken and Becky Madsen at a certain age and what they're doing and where they're going in and searching. You have students. And you're able to provide those messages at a very, very low cost, which we can reach even in areas like neighborhoods Or district. So we're also recommending that. The other thing I wanted to share with you is real estate. Whenever I bought those four or five homes, We'd always meet with our real estate agent and say, how are the school districts? What are we doing? So we want to offer those materials. So when they're saying, are you considering this area? Take a look at our school. Take a look at the value that we're bringing with the sustained excellence. And then the last thing is we have all these audiences, we're recommending champions. So at the end of this session, as you're moving forward, you would select a student, A teacher, a staff member and recognize them. It also gives you the opportunity to keep this moving and having that communication on and on. So what I'd like to do is first of all, thank you. This has been an amazing journey for Becky and myself and we just so glad that we can be a part of this. I'm gonna turn it over to Terry. He's gonna wrap us up and get you out of here. Thank you.
So, you know, I failed to mention that we have this act access to excellence committee. This committee has been around since September and has been doing a lot of this legwork with us, right? So tomorrow, we're actually going to be introducing the playbook. So this is what we're We're calling this our playbook. It's essentially a comprehensive plan that we are gonna put in place. And we're we're using a process that Dr. Malloy likes to call design and engage. So we bring the committee in, we're gonna show them the playbook, we're gonna get their feedback. We're gonna use them as ambassadors as well as other people, hopefully board members as well to People who are within those various audiences. We've identified fifteen audiences, right? So we want student ambassadors. We want people who are in the real estate community who can be ambassadors at that level. People in service organizations who can be in the faith communities. We want to identify those ambassadors. We want to equip them with presentation materials, things like that, that they can go in And then they can start to relay all of these things with their circle of influence, right? So here here's what we're sort of our next steps. We're gonna present the playbook. Which is this is we're just kind of scratching the surface tonight to the committee and that committee meeting is tomorrow. The ambassadors for each audience will be identified. We'll have a whole onboarding process for those people. The ambassadors, the steering committee, board members, staff, et cetera. We'll we'll talk about messaging and how those how those messages will hopefully resonate with each of the the target audiences. And then we're gonna review feedback and design and and insight. So that whole Design and engage process is gonna make this process a very fluid thing. So we we want to make sure that we're able to pivot. So when we get other ideas, we want to be able to implement them as we go along, but We want to make sure that we hit the ground running. So that's why some of the things that Ken's already identified. We got, we want to work from the inside out. So we want to start with the committee. First, we're starting with the board. Tomorrow, we're starting with the committee. We're asking the committee for their buy-in With the playbook and then we're gonna start moving forward with with creating all of these things, including The whole branding aspect of the campaign like Ken said. So this is our timeline. We're hoping to have our budget proposal approved tonight. We'll be at the A to E committee meeting tomorrow. Our campaign theme and we'll turn this all over to to RDA to work their magic on theme and 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 brand visuals By March fifteenth and then by the end of March, we hope to have those outreach and communication materials Ready for those ambassadors to start doing that work as well. So that's gonna take us through the end of May. Like I said, it's a very short window that we have for this, but we think that Everything that we have in place will be, we'll be able to leverage to repurpose and hopefully it's gonna It's going to serve long-term benefits for our school district. So here's the resources that we're gonna need. Your support, your advice. Approval of of the proposed budget. We we're gonna use the ambassadors and and all of the sort of people leverage that we have. And and we need to onboard all of those and and then ongoing project management. So for budget and planning purposes, when we've talked about this with RDA, We said, what's a realistic budget that we can move forward with? And they've provided us with this number. And these are some of the things that are are the deliverables and the costs associated with them. Again, leverage, repurpose. We want to use so many of the things that we already have in place that are no or low cost to us, but there are some things that Are going to have resources attached to them. Look at that real quick. One of the things that we think is going to be sort of an anchor deliverable will be the videos. We'll be able to repurpose those in so many ways for the website, on YouTube channel, through Other social media channels, through local television and PSAs, things like that. Convert them into voiceovers for radio ads. So things that we've never really done before as a school district are some things that we're proposing to do. And then and then we want to make sure that we have some some remaining budget for for other things like media buys, printing, Media placements and those kinds of things. So that's how we came up with that figure. So with that, I will turn it back over to Dr. Malloy.
And thank you to Ken and to Terry and Dan. I know that you're there too as a big part of it there in the back row. I think that the clear ask is, you know, this is an evolving process. As Terry said, you know, maybe we haven't done this in a while. I obviously I I don't think it's been done at all. But we know that we can't just use our traditional needs. It won't get us to where we need to go. And so that's why we are relying on the expertise of RDA. That's why tonight our hope would be that if you You know, feel something is missing or some advice you want to provide, Shelley and Ken are the two members of the board who are on the committee. So whether you want to share those tonight or whether you want to share those with Shelley and Ken afterwards so that it can be brought to the committee, that's one piece. And really the big ask is, you know, we'd like an approval up to that budget. We understand That finances are a challenge for us. We don't ask carelessly. It's just that In order to get to that different place, after we did the work over the last month, well, actually the last two months in particular, We just feel that we need that help to get where we need to go. So that is the explicit ask for your approval. And then we'll bring whatever we need to the committee tomorrow and hopefully, as you can see by that timeline, we gotta get moving. So that's the plan.
Board member, comments or questions?
I just want to say that I'm really, really excited about this work. I think we've done I have been involved for years in fundraising in my Different schools and my sphere of influence, but I don't think we've ever, ever done anything on a district level To try to access our community and to educate them on Where we are, what our finances look like, why we need what we need. I think I'm really excited about it and I can understand why we need to put some resources towards it to be able to get to that goal. So I look forward to hearing about more about it tomorrow.
And if I may, President Mintz, trustee Clark made me remember this. And thank you, Lisa Gross, for being here all night. We're also ensuring that our PTA work and advocacy day and much that's going on on that side, which trustee Ordway and trustee Hurd are a part of Is also connected because that's another dynamic that we've been doing some work on. So I just felt the need to to call Out in thanks for all the you've been providing as well.
Other comments?
Yeah, I just want to say that it is an investment and it's an investment because it's not a small amount. But I think that, yeah, I mean, to Shelley's point, I, this is done at a district level. And it's also, I think Terry had said that it's gonna be reused and repurposed for a lot. So I don't think that we've ever done like, who are we, right? Like San Ramon Valley Unified School District. That's part of the branding. That's part of identity. And I don't think that in a district level. I I think if I remember before my time on the board, you know, certain things were done with regards to communication or But really strategic direction, you know, type type initiatives, but not, uh, who are we? And why are we important to our community and things like that? And and I think that A lot of what we've done, we can reach out to students, right? Well, with with our resources. We can, our parents with our partnership with PTA and Ed funds and things. But there, but there are, I think, a larger community out there that don't have students in, right? In our school district. And I think this is going to require some investment to reach out to them. Yeah, so it's my comment and.
Yeah, I thi- I think it's gonna be very valuable and a high return on investment with with the strategy around Communication, engagement and kind of having that general plan before we implement. Um, I'm super excited about this. I think that it's gonna go a long way and and In not only providing engagement, but I think in this point in time and actually Helping to bring our community together and rally under Under what's great about this district, you know, to the points that were talked about in this meeting tonight. I do have a a question. So so my understanding is that this is a limited time campaign In terms of, you know, ensuring that there's engagement around access to excellence and those types of things. What with that, it it sounds like you guys will be creating a variety of channels, right? Whether it's, you know, social media campaigning, media campaigning. While we have an opportunity as a school district, after the timeline of this campaign is over, Will you be setting up those channels in a way that then our communications team will be able to run with those and continue? Not necessarily the specific campaign, but use that structure to be able to then move forward with With other internal campaigns and messaging that we want to do in the long term?
Absolutely. Something that we're passionate about at the agency is we want to make you self-sufficient. So we even want people involved in the process so they understand how we've done this. And for example, we're doing a lot with the County of Santa Clara and the health systems down there. And so we're also educating their social media people On how to set up campaigns and how to move these forward because it should not be a one and done. When we're finished in, let's say, June thirtieth, the walls should just not stop. You should continue it and keep those. Terry did an excellent job on saying, we're creating assets that you can continue to repurpose and use and get that out. Great question.
But yeah, I think also in that that creating that brand, then being able to use that and and train in that perhaps and to just from a communication department standpoint.
Everything we create is yours. So you can continue to get it to the students, get it to the staff, get it to your partners. And absolutely push that.
And and the other thing that was on the slide, but there were so many different things we were trying to convey. There's also an important piece around Learning what some of the themes are that we might need to address as well. So maybe people share with us that they are concerned about A or B, or they have questions around C or D. And and that allows us to have, even though we get a pulse from those who speak to us the most And that's an important voice. There are people that probably don't speak to us that often, whose voices need to be incorporated as well. So that's another hope and a plan for this process.
Rachel, did you have anything you want to?
Just, it sounds great. So I'd like to make a motion.
Hold on, just just one second. Give me a second. The the only knee jerk reaction that I have and and I I think it's a great plan Is a couple of terms that I want to make sure aren't Misused in our community or misconstrued in our community. One of them is campaign. The other one is branding. Campaign in a school environment is seen about a campaign towards a vote, towards money. And we gotta make sure that it's not about funding at this point in time because we gotta make sure we don't Go over the line in terms of school money being used for something Around some type of funding mechanism. So campaign concerns me. My my personal preference, just to throw it out there, would be community engagement and education. Because that's really what we're trying to accomplish. Because that's really what we're trying to accomplish with this. The other one is branding. Branding sounds too much like marketing. And from a school district perspective, putting funding towards branding, excuse me, again, leaves me a little hesitant. So that's just something to consider going forward. Shelley, with that, oh, go ahead if you want to.
And tomorrow at the committee, we can share that that's a concern and potentially make some shifts to language at that time. And I don't want to lose sight though, that we aren't running away from one of the problems we're trying to solve. We did not want to make this process just about money, finance, grants and gaps. But we're also not ignoring that either. There's still a problem to be solved while we're doing the other steps of the process. And I just wanted to emphasize that because in our speed of going through the presentation, it was there, but I wanted to just emphasize that.
Well, and, and I think, I'm sorry, and I think too, looking at this as an outreach plan as opposed to like a campaign, because that's essentially what it is. We're, we're reaching out to our communities, our variety of communities and ensuring that they're engaged and they understand what we provide, what we do and how they can help us and how we can help them. So, so I mean, I think that there's, you know, there's a lot more to that than just a simple exchange of, you know, campaign marketing type of thing.
I like the word outreach too. I agree with you, Ken. I, I think those are really great suggestions as far as the changing of the verbiage. Because it gives a whole completely different feel to the whole, what we're trying to accomplish. So hopefully we can talk about that more tomorrow. But I would like to make a motion, please, to approve the budget for up to a hundred thousand dollars for the access to excellence outreach.
I'll second.
The motion was made by Board Member Clark and seconded by Board Member Brat. Roll call vote, Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Clark.
Aye.
Board Member Brat.
Aye.
Board Member Hurd.
Aye.
Board Member Mince.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Moving on then, item, goal point, no administrative matters, Board Member Reports. Suzanne.
Hi. So a few things, I guess, just wanted to, oh. So Ken and I actually last weekend, right, went to the Bay, Bay Valleys Chinese School. Chinese New Year celebration. And we partner, actually, right, this, our school district partner with Bay, Bay Valley Chinese School, which is that kind of heritage by language school for our students and families. And it's been, they, when my kids went through, through their classes, it was held Charlotte Wood Middle School, but now they've been moved to Pine Valley because Charlotte Wood is undergoing some, I think, modernization on their campus and things like that. But it was a lot of fun. It was, it was fabulous to see all the students and most of those are our students. Performances and things like that. So that was great. And also attended Asian Pacific Islander School Board Members Association, or it's, it's kind of an offshoot from our California School Board Association. And they had a webinar that was on, on a, a panel on the health and wellbeing of API students, API students. And actually, I attended to listen to a panel of experts on challenges, especially to students, but also the unique challenges to the API students. And our actually Director of Equity Education Owen was attended also. So we listened to that. It was a, yeah, informative webinar. Because they also presented resources and tools for us to use. And then I also, oh, our, our great, I guess, band director or instrumental music teacher, Cheryl Ye Glass, I guess her name keeps popping up. And it's, it's funny because that was the first time I actually met her, I think, was this last weekend at, I was, I was privileged enough to be invited to be part of the San Francisco Chinatown Parade. I got to kind of walk behind a float of a group of us at the Asian Pacific Islander kind of public officials. And while I was there, I saw our San Ramon Valley marching wolves. The, our marching band. That was great. And then of course, the Director, Shelley Glass, Ms. Glass was there actually. And she was the one who provided them the opportunity, signed them up and provided them the opportunity. And they did great. And it was, it was really, really, you know, a great surprise to see our students there. So it was great. Think that's, that's, that's it. I attended the, you know, a couple of the deep learning and innovative committees and the social emotional committees. And with, loved being able to volunteer during lunch duty at a couple of schools, seeing the kids, both middle school and elementary school students there. So that's all for me. Thanks.
Well, Laura and I were fortunate enough to be invited to participate in the Pongal celebration put on by the Bay Area, Bay Area Tamil community. It took place at the East Branch Park in San Ramon and continued later in the day at Dougherty Valley High School. It is a tradition of the Tamil community every year to celebrate their harvest, which is akin to our Thanksgiving. And it was an amazing event, a great community event. And I learned a tremendous amount about the Tamil culture. We were joined by Rebecca Bauer-Kahan and Sabina Zafar from San Ramon and several other dignitaries. We were treated to food and observed their customs, outdoor games. And later in the evening, there was singing and dancing during the high school portion. And I want to thank the whole community and especially Kumar Nalasamy, who is the president for inviting us. We had a really, really nice time and they treated us like movie stars. It was really wonderful. They gave us this traditional dress they put on and it was really great. Rachel and I and Cindy met to work on the Governance Handbook, which we hope will be available to everyone soon. We're continuing to work on that this week to establish some agreed upon protocols and norms to enhance the vision, mission and goals of the district. And I want to remind everyone about Advocacy Day on April twenty second in San Ramon. It's important that if you're able to attend, we will be getting specific thing, talking specifically about school funding and increasing our base funding and why we need it. As Susanna said, we attended the Social Emotional Wellbeing Committee meeting. And we're in good progress on formulating a plan going forward for this program. And I met with the Parcel Tax Oversight Committee for the presentation they did tonight. So that's it for me.
I, as, as Shelley said, I also went to the Pongal celebration. It was wonderful and I really appreciated the invitation. Susanna and I were at the San Ramon City Liaison, SRVUSD liaison meeting. And, and that was, that was interesting and informative. They're working on, they're starting to work on the bridge that goes over Bullinger Canyon. And I kind of got a little bit of guesstimate of timeline and it looks like the major construction, barring any, any supply chain issues, will be next school year. So, so and then, and they'll reroute the, the pathway for the kids that, that walk across. So, but I'm, as someone that, that's lived down in that community, I'm really excited for those students that walk that path to Iron Horse. So I think it's going to be a really great, great asset to our community. And that's kind of it for me. So I didn't do a lot. I've had, there's things going on in my family world. But, but I'm looking forward to, to the rest of the semester. I know our progress reports came out and that was exciting. And I just, I, I guess I just want to say one last thing that I really appreciated in this last week and really this last day, the, the amount of public comments, both in the room today and, and via email that was, that was respectful and truthful and to the heart. And, and, and I really respected that, that tone and that voice. It meant a lot to me to feel like people were, were speaking truth and not just yelling. So, thank you.
From a liaison perspective, I participated in three district caucuses with the Serbian negotiating team. We have been working on negotiating the impacts of SB three twenty eight, which is the late start bill and what it does to the bell schedules, as well as Universal TK. And that's been going well. Thank you, Melanie, for being our fearless leader in that. I've also attended the San Ramon Valley Council PTA's general meeting, as well as the education, exceptional education committee meeting. Like Shelley said, we've been working on the handbook. And I've attended the Deep Learning and Innovation, as well as the Grade Reform Committee. So there's a lot of synergy between those two. Today, I really enjoyed attending the Twin Creek Staff Development Day. I was invited to facilitate the dyslexia simulation and then they invited me to stay for the rest of the day. And it was just so great to, to stay for this impactful day of collective learning on, with their staff about structured literacy and diagnostic measures and then how they were going to apply what they learned today directly to identifying three students. And it was just more of the same good stuff of just watching how MTSS is really taking root in, in our district. And that particular staff has really seen the connection with the structured literacy and the, the dyslexic student, not as a standalone, but as a kind of the extreme case of the continuum. It was just wonderful. And so hats off to kindergarten teacher Karen Cleary, who really was the, the lead presenter and Principal Shelley Kravitz and our district ELA coordinator, Deanna Sifia. They just did a fantastic job. And one last thing, if you could all put April twenty first on your calendar, that's the next CCC SBA meeting where Zaretta Hammond will be speaking about cultural bonds of teaching, learning and probably the synergy with the brain and learning to read also. And Deb has actually rescheduled the deep learning meeting so that some of our staff members can attend that as well. That's all.
Thank you. Just real quick, Lauren and I have been working with Terry Keeney on our communications advocacy role along the lines of the handbook that you're working on. And hope to have a workshop pretty soon where we can all come together and discuss our role. Because it fits right in with the access to excellence work. Coming up, I've got the Access to Excellence Committee tomorrow on Thursday. Danville Liaison with Shelley. And then on Friday, I, I represent us with the Emergency Preparing Assistance and Core Counsel Policy Committee. I'll be attending that meeting as well. And that's it for me. So if there's no other business, it's eleven twenty six. I thought I was stretching it a little bit, but it, hey, we're out before having to take the vote a second time. How about that? We're adjourned.